Everyone, and welcome back. Board members Shuffel and Esser will be attending today's meeting remotely. You can both hear me? Yes? Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Cordial, would you please call the room?
Board member Durham.
Here.
Board member Skarskap.
Here.
Board member Esser.
Here.
Board member McClellan.
Here.
Board member Rankin.
Here.
Board member Shuffel.
Here.
And board member Schroeder.
Here. Thank you. So, the first item on our agenda this morning is a report from our legislative liaison. She will be presenting remotely to us, and I do see her on our screen. Ms. Mello, let me turn it over to you now, please.
Good morning. It's nice to see all of you, although it's a little hard to see all of you. It's kind of distant, and I'll start with that, just so you know that if you're trying to get my attention to ask a question, probably want to speak up instead of waving at me because the camera's a little far back. Can you all see me and hear me okay? I'm going to assume the answer is yes, since I'm not hearing anything else. So, wanted to talk a little bit about what's been happening in the interim. It's been a few months since I've presented to you all, which is typical. We're not super busy, obviously, with the legislature during the summer, but as we get into the fall, things start to pick up, so wanted to give you some updated information. Was going to start by talking about the interim committees. You know, in an election year, we tend to have fewer interim committees, and that is certainly the case this year. There are three that are relevant to the work that you, as a state board, and the department, takes care of. They're all kind of very much in the middle of their process, and we don't have any definitive, final conclusions for many of them quite yet. The first is the School Finance Interim Committee. You probably remember, this is one we have seen, gosh, I think for the last four years in the interim, there's been some efforts to bring folks together and talk about the school finance formula and potential changes to that. The current chair of that interim committee is Representative Julie McCloskey. The vice chair is Senator Barbara Kirkmeier. Bipartisan in that regard. They have had two meetings. They met on August 16th and August 30th. They have spent the bulk of those first two meetings kind of reviewing information about recent formula changes. The department was invited, department staff was invited, and gave a presentation on the status of spending the federal dollars, so that went well. There will be additional meetings. They have not yet been scheduled, so I don't know when they're going to be. I talked to the committee staff yesterday, and she told me it may very well not be until after the election that we see another committee meeting. They do have the ability to bring forward legislation, but we don't, they have not started discussing specific legislation yet, so we don't know what, if anything, will come out of that. Another interim committee is the Early Childhood and School Readiness. This is also one we see year in and year out. This one has statutory authority to meet consistently. The current chair is Representative Emily Sirota from Denver, and the vice chair is Senator Janet Buckner. They have also had two meetings so far. They were both in July, on the 7th and the 26th. CDE was asked to provide an update on the 7th of July regarding department activities, particularly the transition to the new Early Childhood Department and just, you know, the steps that CDE is undertaking as that transition occurs. And they gave some information about kindergarten readiness and the department's work on that. Again, we have not seen any legislative proposals coming out of them, and there will be initial meetings, but they have not been scheduled. The final one I wanted to bring to your attention is called the Colorado Youth Advisory Committee. This one's a little bit more interesting in that it's actually been around for a while, but because of the way statutory authority was set up, it had the ability to propose legislation, but it never did because the timeframes and the statutes didn't line up. Last year, Senator Moreno carried a bill to change those timeframes to make them more consistent with how the legislative calendar typically works. And Senator Moreno is the chair of this particular committee. It also includes Senator Coleman, Representative Mandy Lindsay, Senator Don Corum, and Representative Hugh McKean, so it's a relatively small committee. And the legislators are essentially sitting, hearing from this entity called the Colorado Youth Advisory Committee, which is made up of young people from across the state. There's an appointment process for how these young folks get on the advisory committee, and then that advisory committee is talking to the legislators in their committee. So, hopefully that makes some sense. I'm happy to answer questions if it doesn't. They have also had two meetings. They met on August 5th and the 19th. Their next and final meeting is scheduled for September 30th. They have authorized some concepts to go to bill drafting. That language has just become available to us in like in the last 24 to 48 hours, and so we are looking at that as your staff, trying to wrap our arms around the topics, which topics might apply to the Department of Ed. And as we work through that analysis, if we think it's necessary, we'll work through our typical process, where we'll bring some information to legislative contacts, and they can make some recommendations to the full board if they choose to do so. So, stay tuned. You may hear more from us on that, but we're really just starting to understand some of the proposals coming out of that entity. Let me pause there. I don't have great, like I said, great visuals, and part of that is also my restrictions of having a teeny tiny computer. So, I just want to see if there's any questions about interim committees before I move on in topic.
Thank you, Ms. Mello. Colleagues, are there any questions? Board member Shuffel, if you have a question, I cannot see you. Are you still with us?
I'm still with you, and I don't have a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mello, continue on, please.
Thank you. So, the next topic I was asked to discuss a little bit are the upcoming elections. I really will try to be very neutral as I present this information. I recognize that you all are elected officials, and you all run, you know, with a party affiliation. As you know, the legislature is a similar entity. A couple of interesting, well, a number of interesting elements, but the first one I'll mention is that we do have several sitting legislators who are actively running for Congress right now. That includes Senator Barbara Kirkmeier, who is the Republican candidate in the New Eight Congressional District, Senator Brittany Patterson, who is running in the Seventh Congressional District, and Representative Yedira Caraveo, who is the Democratic nominee for the Congressional District Eight race. So, she and Senator Kirkmeier are essentially running against each other. And those are all folks that have come out of the primaries, so they are definitely running. If Senator Kirkmeier does not win, she will still be in the legislature because her Senate term is not up for another two years. The other two individuals, Senator Patterson and Rep. Caraveo, if they, well, win or lose their congressional races, they will not be coming back to the legislature in 2023. You know, all eyes really are on the Senate. As everyone here knows, we have had, for the last four years, Democrats have controlled the House and the Senate and the governor's office. There is a possibility that control of the Senate might change as a result of this elections, and that's really where the bulk of the political energy and spending is happening. We will have at least eight new senators out of 35. There could be more, obviously, depending on how some of these elections turn out. And this is a fairly common trend. A lot of times when we have new senators, they have previously served in the House. So, they're new to the Senate, but they're not necessarily new to the legislature. Some good examples of that in this particular cycle would include current Representative Mark Basely, current Representative Janice Rich. Both of them are highly likely, they're not in particularly competitive seats, to be joining the State Senate when it convenes in 2023. There are about seven competitive seats in the Senate that could go either way. Most are in the suburban areas of Denver, kind of that Arapahoe-Jeffco Adams, you know, the suburbs that surround city and county of Denver. There's also a pretty big competitive seat down in the Pueblo, one in what I call the Mountain Resort area. I'm never quite sure what to call that, but, you know, Vale and then surrounding territories. There's another competitive seat in Colorado Springs and one up in Loveland. So, there's a decent geographic spread of competition around the state. You all, I'm sure, have seen the news lately that Senator Kevin Prilla, who has been a Republican for a number of years, recently changed his party affiliation to Democrat. So, as things stand right now, he is a member of the State Senate with the Democratic Caucus. There has been an effort mounted to recall him. We will see how that plays out. My understanding is they are starting to collect signatures for that recall. There may be some litigation. There's, it's a little bit of a complicated matter because we're in the, because of redistricting, right? Because everyone's running in newly drawn districts for 2022, there's been a legal question raised as to whether recall signatures need to be collected in Senator Prilla's old district boundaries or new district boundaries. Secretary of State said the new district boundaries, but I think we'll see some litigation and ask the courts to weigh in on that. So, more to come on that. Obviously, if the Democrats hold that seat because it's Senator Prilla or a different Democrat, that makes it easier for them to keep control of the State Senate, right? At the end of the day, it's a numbers game. With Senator Prilla, they've got a 21-14 majority as we sit right now, and political watchers are, we're, all of us in the political chattering class are very, very interested to see how these Senate races turn out, and we're paying close attention. I think we have a fairly stable leadership situation in the Senate regardless of how the elections turn out. Now, obviously, if the Democrats keep control, they have the primary leadership positions. Senator Steve Feenberg from Boulder is currently serving as president. I would predict that he would continue to do so. Senator Dominic Moreno is currently serving as Majority Leader, and I would predict he would continue to do so. If the Senate Republicans, if Republicans have the majority of seats, I would expect to see Senator Pauline Dean as President of the Senate, obviously a former State Board of Education member, and Senator Bob Gardner is likely to be the Majority Leader in the Senate if the Republicans take over. We will probably have a very different education committee in the Senate because of all of these moving pieces, right? So, in some cases, we're losing members of the committee. If Republicans take over the Senate, then they get to decide who chairs the committees, and so that we could see some change there. You probably remember that when we started the '22 legislative session, Senator Rachel Zenzinger chaired the Senate Education Committee. Midway through session, as a result of President Garcia resigning his seat, Senator Zenzinger moved over to the Joint Budget Committee, and then Jeff Bridges became Chair of the Senate Education Committee. All of that is kind of up in the air right now, and all of, how all that plays out, who's on the committee, who's running the committee, will all be determined by the election. So, certainly something I'm keeping a very close eye on for your, on your behalf, and will continue to communicate about that as we get info. The State House races aren't getting quite as much attention. Right now, the Democrats hold a 12-seat majority there, and so it's just much harder, frankly, for Republicans to take that chamber over. Nonetheless, there are some very competitive races in the House. Those are centered in El Paso again, in the mountain communities in the Breckenridge area, Durango, Arapahoe County, Jefferson County, and Steamboat Springs area. There are 25 open seats. So, we will have 25 brand-new members of the House in 2023, 25 out of 65, so that's a pretty big proportion. Very few of those have any legislative experience. Many of them have served in local government, but they will be new to the legislature, and there could be more because we could have, in some of these competitive seats, we could have incumbents lose, and their challengers would then be a new member of the legislature. I think the leadership structure on the House Republican side is also pretty predictable. Representative Hugh McKean, who's currently the Minority Leader, is likely to stay in charge of that caucus. Representative Colin Larson, who has served on the House Education Committee for a number of years, is likely to be the number two in the House Republican Caucus. On the Democratic side, it's actually much less clear. So, Speaker Garnett, our current Speaker, and the current Majority Leader, Denea Esker, are both term limited, so they can't come back. They can't be leaders, can't be a leader if you're not in the legislature. So, we'll have a pretty wide-open race for those two positions. Right now, what we are hearing, and I want to be really clear that this is what I hear. So, this is not official information, but what most people are talking about is that we anticipate that the race for Speaker will be between Representative Chris Kennedy, Representative Julie McCloskey, and Representative Adrian Benavides. Things could change dramatically between now and the next two months, so none of those people may run for Speaker. Other people may run for Speaker, but that's what the rumor mill is telling us right now. Similar to the Senate, I think we will have a very different House Education Committee. Right now, there's nine members of that committee. At least four of them are not coming back at all, like there's no chance they're coming back. Either they're running for the Senate, or they're term limited, or they're doing other things. The current chair of the House Education Committee is Representative Barbara McLaughlin from Durango. She does have a competitive race, so obviously, if she wins, you know, she'll be back and I think would probably continue to chair the committee. If she doesn't win, then, well, when you don't win, unfortunately, you can't serve on the committees anymore. So, watching that carefully as well. I'm going to talk in a minute about some legislative implementation issues, but let me just pause there. Again, that's kind of my second major topic and see if there's any questions or information I can provide about the political and electoral situation in the House and Senate.
Colleagues, any question? Go ahead, Ms. Mello. Thank you.
Great. So, last thing I wanted to talk about is the implementation process for legislation that came, that passed in 2022. You all have received the implementation document that your staff spends a lot of time putting together. It's a really great document. It's one of the many reasons I'm really proud to work with, the people I get to work with at the Department of Education. They take it very seriously. They have a really good process of looking at the bills that passed, identifying very specifically what needs to happen, by when, and who is doing that. So, it's like a 60-page document, and it's a fairly long, detailed piece of information. That is something that has been distributed to you previously. I'm not going to read you 60 pages right now. I don't think you want me to do that. But what I will do is just give you some kind of highlights. There were 35 bills passed in this last session that require some implementation work from the department. There are 10 bills that require working groups or stakeholder committees. That's one number I wanted to highlight for you. Now, the department is not running all of those, and in fact, I think the department is running maybe three or four of those. I'll talk more and detail about one of those in a moment. So, some of those are just saying somebody from CDE has to sit on a working group. It's not always that we're in charge of the whole thing. And there are 12 bills that will require you all to either create new rules or to amend your existing rules. The department, let's see, the appropriation to the department this year was, this is a big number. Well, it includes school finance. So, it's in the billions. I'm sorry. It's about 300 million. 300 million was appropriated to the department. But again, that's inclusive of school finance, which, as you know, most of those dollars go right back out the door, so those don't really apply to implementation work. There were 13 new FTE authorized for the department through the legislative process, and six FTE will be moving over to the Department of Early Childhood. There's, I'm going to highlight five bills for you that I think are probably the most significant lift for your staff in terms of putting them into place, just so you have kind of a heads up about where those conversations will be coming to you over the next few months. There's a new at-risk, excuse me, a new at-risk measure created in the School Finance Act. School finance is a big, complicated math problem. You all are very grateful for the fact that I am not in charge of that. I would be really, really bad at that, but you've got great staff who run that. When you change any one component of that, it has a lot of implications, and you have to do a lot of work to kind of make sure all the numbers are playing out right. One of the working groups that the department was directed to staff and implement is a study of extended high school programs. This is House Bill 1215, and you all, as a board, actually supported this legislation. The goal of the working group is to bring together, as always, stakeholders from across the spectrum and really talk about the existing programs we have that blend those high school, college years, so programs like concurrent enrollment or PTAC. Those are examples of existing programs, and then make recommendations as to, do we want to keep doing what we're doing as a state? Do we want to do things differently? There's, it's a two-year committee, so they're tasked with making recommendations this December that could get picked up by the legislature, and then they'll make another set of recommendations at the end of 2023. We spent a lot of time talking about the legislation that impacted teachers. So, the bill had a couple of different components. One was a grant program for student teachers. That is run by the Department of Higher Eds. That's not something that this, your department has to implement. But there was a component of that bill that required the department to, and you all, to develop an alternative to licensure for folks that struggle to perform on the standardized tests that are currently part of the teacher licensure system. Again, we had lots and lots of policy conversation about this as this bill went through, and I know it's something you all were very interested in. From an implementation perspective, that is a pretty big lift and something your staff is getting moving on. Another piece of legislation that you all monitored and then opposed, and then I think we went back to monitor because we got some changes that you wanted, relates to supportive learning environments. That is kind of a code, or not a code, but an overall term for looking at issues around student discipline, who's being disciplined and how, how students are interacting with law enforcement, all of those issues. And the department is required to consult with some folks to talk about how to implement that. That process is underway, and there's some real changes, I think, that will come to the data systems and what data gets collected. One of the changes we made sure that got put into the legislation at your request was to ensure protection for student personal, personally identifiable information of students that would continue to be protected under the same rigorous data protections we have right now. So, that was, that was in the legislation that was adopted. It wasn't in the introduced version, something we worked with to fix on your behalf. And then the final bill I'll highlight is the new requirement that principals receive training in the science of reading. It's elementary school principals or principals who are supervising teachers who teach reading. I'm sure you all remember that a couple of years ago, legislation passed to require demonstration of scientific-based training in reading for teachers. This adds on to that. In some ways, the work is similar, and I think you all may have already started talking about this as a board. But again, just another one that, you know, is going to have some definite requirements for staff time in terms of getting that up and running and ensuring that the legislation is implemented. That is all of the implementation work I wanted to highlight, so I'm happy to answer any questions I can about that.
Thank you, Ms. Mello. Colleagues. Board member Rankin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Mello, you mentioned briefly at-risk factor added in. Would that supplement or supplant the FRL that we currently have as our determinant for risk factor?
I apologize. I don't know that answer off the top of my head. Let me find out, and I'll get back to you.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? I am not able to see you all because you're in a straight line. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mello. I believe that's all. Thanks for your report, and you can just sort of email, email that answer.
Madam Chair, can I just give one update?
Please.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.
Thanks, Ms. Mello. Just related to this topic, I did just want to give a quick update. I had sent you all an email quite some time ago saying that we were also going to work on hiring an internal support for legislative issues, and we are through to the very close end of that interview process, and we'll probably have a new person to introduce to you in two weeks. And that is a full-time person that will come on, you know, as I mentioned in the email, we do think we need more capacity with the amount of legislation that comes through no matter what, so this person will be helping us internally keep track of things, keep track of all of the committees that, Ms. Mello can't attend all of the many committees. This person will be doing that, and if there are any conflicts or anything like that, this person will be doing that work for us, and will also be sitting on some of the governor's cabinet legislative meetings. So, that will be happening soon, and we do have some good candidates.
That's great. Thank you. Board member Durham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What's the salary range in this position?
I will have to turn that over to the Deputy Commissioner.
The salary, is it fine? Can you guys hear okay? The salary range we posted, I believe, $80,000 to $95,000 a year is what we posted. And just in terms of timing, we'll probably have somebody that we've offered the position to in two weeks. I don't know. We won't have start date for a while after that, just process-wise, it'll take a little longer. But we're doing final interviews next week.
Okay, maybe we can have an offline conversation about that salary range, Dr. Anthes, when we get a chance. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, colleagues? Thank you. So, before I get to the next item, I would like to let staff know that the way we've arranged the missing, our colleagues who are not with us but are with us remotely is great, right? So, if either one of them puts up a hand, growls, does anything, we'll know about it, and so it'll be just like the real thing. So, Marie or whoever's accomplishing that, I just want to point that out before we go south on something, knowing that it's technology and it's Thursday. Next item on our agenda is recognition of seven of Colorado's outstanding students. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is always one of our favorite events, is to recognize outstanding student artists, and then we get to enjoy that artwork in our new state boardroom that, this will be the first artwork that's presented in our new state boardroom that we are doing under construction right now. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Busy Cordial to introduce the student artists we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anthes. We have five multi-talented students to celebrate, only one of whom was able to attend today as most are in college and weren't able to attend due to their class schedules. However, it's my privilege to introduce and recognize the students to you today. This recognition has become an annual tradition through the collaborative partnership established with our congressional representative in providing second-place award-winning art from the 2022 Congressional Art Show, a competition to be housed in the department for one year. Michelle will display the artwork as I recognize each student. First is Joshua Ramirez, who graduated from Northeast Early College in Denver Public Schools in the first congressional district. He was unable to attend, but I will read a brief statement as you view his piece titled "Stars and Stripes." I came up with this title because I was thinking of the design, and I thought that there are stripes, and I thought that there are stripes, and the women would be called the stars. I want to get across, what I want to get across is the way that women today are still discriminated against. To represent the discrimination against women, I only added women, and to represent discrimination against people of color, I put women of all different races. The next is Gracia Beach, who graduated from Jefferson Academy and Jeffco Public Schools in the second congressional district. She was unable to attend, but I will read a brief statement from her as you view her title, her artwork titled "Lol." I created lol to bring a feeling of comfort and tranquility to the viewer. I thought about where I would feel most relaxed and came up with a room full of cats, plants, and books, which are things that bring me comfort. The blue and yellow light coming through the windows represents sun and moonlight, implying the room is a place existing outside of time. The plants are green while everything else is monochromatic, to highlight the living room growing nature, to highlight the living room growing nature of plants. As you look at this painting, I challenge you to find all five cats dotted across the scene. Next is Adriana Garcia Hernandez, who graduated from Highland High School and welled RE9 from the fourth congressional district. She too was unable to join us today, but I will read a brief statement from her as you view her piece titled "Sunset Highland." This artwork is how I feel and view the world. It also represents my emotions of how the dark landscape makes dusk look that much more beautiful. I got my inspiration from "Starry Night" by Vincent Van Gogh. This is one of the artworks that have stuck with me my whole life. Okay? [laughing] Next is Andrew Bailey, who graduated from Fountain Fort Carson High School in Fountain School District Number Eight in the fifth congressional district. He was unable to attend, but I will read a brief statement from him as you view his piece titled "The Void." piece titled The Void. Originally titled Lonesome, The Void is a minimalist photograph showing the silhouette of a person carrying an umbrella into an empty expanse. The piece comes from an uncertain time in my life, specifically entering the second semester of my senior year. With what I would be doing following graduation, I was very much undecided. I was feeling lost, and created this photograph in an effort to give myself an outlet for these uncertain feelings and fears. Art at its core is meant to be for self-expression and contemplation. The most powerful art is the piece that comes from the heart and the soul of the artist. When one allows students to be themselves and comfortable enough to be vulnerable in a classroom, one will always be surprised at the results. I appreciate my time in high school with a great photography teacher that encouraged exactly what I have described, and hope that other students from Colorado also have a chance to celebrate, push forward, surprise, and inspire us with what is possible from a student artist. And last, we have here with us today Zane Yeager, who graduated from Ralston Valley, Ralston Valley High School in Jeffco, from the seventh congressional district. We are very excited to have you here today, and he will now talk about his piece titled No Filter, hashtag No Filter.
So is this a bit of a critique on social media culture in general? Oh, okay, okay. So it's pretty much just a critique on social media culture. So I have all these different arms and hands representing different social medias, contorting this figure, kind of showing how like, we have to always appease this insatiable audience on social media platforms. I really try to like use different 2D and 3D elements to like contrast the difference between like our raw individual self and all these personas and opinions put upon us from social media and all those forces.
That's great. Thank you. Okay. We'll do the pictures. So I'd like to congratulate you on your outstanding talent. It's really rewarding for the state board to get to see the work that students, that our students are doing. We're pleased that you've shared your art with us. We'll be honored to hang it in the new Department of Education boardroom for the coming year. I also would like to recognize the parents and teachers who are here and who have supported all our kids in doing this encouraging work. I know that parents and teachers are an integral part of the success through their encouragement and their support. So on behalf of the board, I want to thank you very much. Now, if you'll come up for a photograph and a, with our commissioner, and, yeah, is this your, is this your family? Zane, if your family's here, go ahead and bring them up also. Please.
Where would you like us so we're not with our heads in the screens? How about with the Board of Education bodies? Zane, do you want to hold your art first, and your mom can hold your picture?
Just photobomb them.
Can we do one looking at him and then one looking at you?
Sure, yeah.
All right. Love that. Yeah. It's true. We're so demanding, and then one at our phone, and he does. The crazy teacher photographers.
And if I might, can I do a couple photos that I didn't get to do before it was framed, just with the glasswork? Okay, thank you. And then Wolfers. Thank you for all your hard work. I'm putting them together. It's amazing. Like, your communication is outstanding.
That was actually Busy Cordial.
Oh, I thought you were busy up there doing that. Who's busy that we could say? Thank you so much. You guys are amazing. And you never get the recommendations or the accolades that everyone always needs to hear from behind the scenes, so thank you.
Oh, thank you. And congratulations. Thank you so much.
You shouldn't dare to say things like that, Steve Durham. You're like my husband. Then, of course, it all falls apart.
Then you get a bad result.
Yeah. Deb and Carla, did you guys get to see the artwork at all? No?
We'll get to enjoy it.
You'll get to enjoy it. It's pretty.
Thank you.
It's pretty amazing. All right, the next item on our agenda is a notice of rulemaking for the rules for the administration of the Educational Stability Grant Program for Highly Mobile Students, 1 CCR 301-104. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn this over to Danielle Ongard, who is joining us remotely today. There she is. Ms. Ongard, do you want to take it from here?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Anthes, and a good morning, our state board. As Commissioner Anthes said, my name is Danielle Ongard, and I'm the Executive Director of the Student Pathways Unit. I'm here to present information for Agenda Item Number 501, the Notice of Rulemaking, Rules for the Administration of the Educational Stability Grant Program for Highly Mobile Students, which is 1 CCR 301-104. In your board packets, you have a number of items for your consideration, a memo addressing the item, both redlined and clean versions of the draft rules, and a crosswalk of rule to statute. This program, which was originally created in House Bill 181306, provides funding for services and supports for the education of highly mobile students. Senate Bill 22140, titled Concerning Expansion of Experiential Learning Opportunities, made changes to the Educational Stability Grant Program to explicitly add work-based learning as an academic support, and to remove the term "out-of-home placement" in a few places, making it clear that the program should be focused on serving all highly mobile students. These suggested rule amendments are being made in order to comply with these changes in statute, and so we, as C D E staff, would request that the board vote to approve a notice of a rulemaking hearing to consider changes to 1 CCR 301-104. If a notice is approved, the board would hold a hearing on the rules during its November board meeting and may vote on the rule amendments at that time. I'm happy to answer any questions that our board members may have, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Could I have a motion, please?
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to approve the Notice of Rulemaking, Rules for the Administration of the Educational Stability Grant Program for Highly Mobile Students, 1 CCR 301-104.
It's a proper motion. Do I have a second? Second?
Second.
Two seconds. Comments and questions? Board Member Durham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. How much money is involved in this grant, this, for this particular year?
Thank you for that question, Board Member Durham. We distribute approximately eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year currently to ten different grantees.
So, now, obviously, not every so-called highly mobile student is going to receive this kind of support. So what, what kind of support in these ten grantees, I presume that's ten districts or ten schools?
Thank you. There may be multiple schools in a district that are part of this. Some of our outcomes that have, that have been made so far in the last three years since the grant program was created, three thousand seven hundred nine highly mobile students were served by those grantees, ninety-four point five percent transitioned to the next grade level, and eighty-six percent of students served experienced positive outcomes, which include school completion, course completion, and continuation of education in the same district. And of all of the students served, ninety-nine point one percent remained in school, and then if they were meant to graduate or complete a grade level, they also stayed, completed, and graduated.
So what's the, what would those statistics be for students in districts or schools that did not receive this support?
Thank you, Board Member Durham. That's a great question. I do not know the numbers off the top of my head for all highly mobile students and what their grade and course completion and graduation would be. I do know that, though, that group of students overall, since it includes homeless, foster, and migrant students, is generally much lower than our state averages. I can definitely get those specifics for you, though.
Well, how can you, it's difficult to judge the effectiveness of a grant program if you don't have a control group. So if there's no, so what you're, what you're saying is that districts and schools maintain statistics on this category of child, and you can access those but haven't done so up to this point in time?
We do have, I'm aware of that information at the aggregate level for the state, for those different populations of students. I just don't have that at my fingertips at the moment, but I can definitely get that information for you.
Thank you. I think, I think, you know, there's, I'll look forward to taking a look at the details of the rules, but, you know, I think it's time that we look at all of our grant programs and make sure there's a control group out there so you can see, take a look at the delta and between the control group and the, the group that's receiving the grant, and do a quick mathematical calculation. You were, you were giving three-year statistics, as I, am I correct, on the number of, of kids that benefited? Was that correct, over the past three years of these grants?
Yes. The grant, the grant cycle runs for three years. You are correct.
So the last three years, the grants have probably totaled somewhere in the neighborhood of two and a half million, correct? So if you take.
Yes. Yeah, a little over two and a half million, yes, for three years.
The calculation I'd like to see is the delta, the percentage difference between the completers and whatever statistics you pull, the number of students over that three-year period divided into the total amount of the grant, so we see what each of these improvements is costing. And I think I would like to just put the department on notice that whenever we have any of these kinds of grants, in the future, I'm going to ask for this kind of information. And, and so we can look at a control group and see what the cost of, of success happens to be, so we can do, and, and if this is really a great program and of such significant value, it should be available to all students in this category and should not continue to be a grant program. We need to find a way to go to the legislature and say, this works. You should have a nice day in funding it for each district. Because to continue it as a grant program, I guess probably gets it to the schools that are best grant writers, not necessarily to those with the most need. So it, it makes no sense to continue down this grant road that we're on with all these great ideas if they're proven to work, if the legislature is unwilling to fund them on a mass basis. We might as well, we might as well conclude that the legislature doesn't think they're worth doing, and we get to keep administering the grants for a relatively small number of these children. So I think it's time for the legislature to start to fish or cut bait on, on all of their great ideas. If they're really that great, let's fund them. If they prove to be inordinately expensive on a per-capita basis, then we need to make some decisions about whether that money might be better used elsewhere. Thank you.
May I ask a question? I think of Ms. Ongard, and that is, and I see your hand, Board Member Sheffield, I'll get to you right away. What I heard you say is that you have the data for these students collective at the statewide level. Do you have it by district so that Board Member Durham's request would be to compare, to have a control group of similar kids who did not benefit from the grant? Or will the comparison only be between the group of students and all students? Do you, do you know off the top of your head, Ms. Ongard, what kind of data you have available?
Let, let me clarify.
Oh, maybe I misunderstood you.
I think, I think, I don't think it's a complicated calculation, that apparently this class of student is being identified by all districts, because I, I presume that's the case, that there must be some requirement. Is, is that the case? Let me ask, let me put it into a question. Ms. Ongard, are districts required to identify this, this, this category of student?
Great questions. Thank you very much, Board Member Durham and Madam Chair. We do have information by the district level, just depending on the, of course, the district size and then the number of highly mobile students. We do have some districts where the N size is too small, so generally that data would kind of be masked to us. But I can get information at the district level for, at a minimum, all of our grantees, and then we can also do, try to do that comparison, as you suggested, Board Member Durham, with the rest of the state and the other districts in the state.
I think the calculation's relatively simple, and we know, we know how many students or should know, and we don't know, need to know it by district, really. It's how many students in the state have been identified in this category, how, and what, what are their outcomes? And, and what, and then, and the percentage, what percentage of, of the students are in the same categories that you identified as success in, in that aggregate, in those aggregate numbers? You can then, so let's say, just pick a number at random, and say that the grantees have a twenty percent higher success rate than, than the students that, than the districts that don't get a grant. So then you take the number of students that are in the grant program, you take twenty percent of that number, you divide it into whatever the, hopefully, these should be one, one-year numbers, not three. So how many students in one year were still there, and so on. Then you can, you can compute the cost per student, and if it's, you know, if it's fifty thousand dollars a student, it's one thing. If it's a thousand dollars a student, it's another. But if it's successful, then we should be able to say, if it's a thousand dollars a student, legislature needs to increase the appropriation in the School Finance Act by X thousands of dollars to be distributed to districts based on this count, and they can all have their own programs. If it's twenty thousand dollars a student, the legislature is going to think a little harder about it, and we, and they should think hard about whether we continue this grant, what I will characterize as nonsense. It's not a bad program. That's not the point. At some point in time, it needs, needs to be proven to get good results and therefore implemented on a student-wide, non-discriminatory basis, or it needs to go away. Because we've proven it works, so continuing to have it a grant, as a grant, is a waste of a good percentage of the money because we have overhead costs in administering the grant. So if it's a good program, there's no reason for it to be a grant. It should be, we should, we should start getting these grants out of our portfolio, either because they're proven to work and deserve support, or they're proven not to work. And I think, and I want to see that analysis based on this kind of grant, or based on this kind of comparison for every grant we have where it's possible to identify the students that are benefiting going forward, so we can make recommendations to the legislature to terminate the grant and implement the program.
You've come to the crux of why we have grant programs, which is to try things, see if they work, and then implement them on a large scale. So I.
I think, I think, Madam Chair, it's just, it's really time to, to, in some ways, call the legislature for account. They have, they have a lot of good ideas. This, this is likely one of them, if, and the, the if question is, is it affordable? And that's their decision, not ours. But if it's not affordable for, for us to continue to move grant money around year after year, benefiting some students in some districts that are better at writing grants greater than others, then it, it really is becoming the definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result.
It's inequitable, too. Board Member Sheffield?
Yeah, I just wondered if you could, thank you, Madam Chair, just address the, the innovative practices. I mean, the students that benefit from this grant, as I understand it, are homeless, or they're in foster care, or they're not under the care of an adult. Is that right? And then it says it'll implement innovative practices, and there's a couple thing, a couple of things listed, working with community groups, or.
Yep.
Board Member Scheffel?
Uh, yeah, I just wondered if you could, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, just address the, the innovative practices. I mean, the students that benefit from this grant, as I understand it, are homeless, or they're in foster care, or they're not under the care of an adult. Is that right? And then it says it'll implement innovative practices, and there's a couple thing, a couple things listed, working with community groups, or tutoring, or whatever. But could you just talk about what actually happens with the money? What really is the highest leverage point to help these students stabilize? What do people really spend the money on?
Yes. Thank you, Board Member Scheffel, for that question. In our request for applications, we do list out different sections, so that, those innovative practices that you've mentioned, and then there's a number of items underneath. Connectedness, essential needs, since we know that these are highly mobile students, so that would be safety, housing, food, et cetera. Multiple pathways, opportunities, so that would be that work-based learning, other career and college exploration activities. But to answer your very specific question about some innovative solutions, some that we have suggested in the past through the request for application include academic progression and course completion, but doing that in theoretically a more creative way. Being able to seamlessly transfer coursework, so that's kind of more on that adult side. Making sure that if a student is transitioning schools or districts, that their coursework, you know, they don't have to worry about how that's going to transfer from school to school or district to district. Assessment of academic gaps due to school mobility, so making sure that staff members have the time to do that, and then make sure to bring students up to speed. Assessment of educational milestones. And so again, if they're moving school to school, how are we sure that we know what the student needs to know and what they already know? And then also looking at credit approval and attainment. There are other things that applicants could decide that they would like to, to do, and then, of course, we review that along with our readers when looking at the request for applications.
Okay, thank you. And so it seems to me like those are things that kind of happen anyway, don't they? I mean, every high school kind of does those things. But i- is this grant then to hire another person that then has a smaller caseload, so they spend more time with these students? Or are they helping them find housing? I mean, I guess I'd just love more detail on really, what really happens, because a lot of, you know, credit recovery and, and transitioning from one school to another, I mean, that kind of happens for all kids, probably a lot. But really, what's different about this program that just addresses these unique needs is what I was wondering. Maybe they hire more people, smaller caseload, more time, find housing. I don't know. What is it?
Thank you very much, Board Member Scheffel. I'm happy to, I can provide you with some, some written, very detailed information. But at a high level, you are correct, that hiring additional full-time equivalents, full-time employees to help with interventionists, to help doing, to help with those, those basic needs, and not, not just doing a warm handoff, but going with families and actually making sure that they're able to access the resources that they need to make sure that their student is safe, housed, clothed, fed, et cetera. So it is having human capital to make sure that there's that one-on-one support for these students that have a significant amount of needs, more needs than other students in the school potentially. So we look for intentional models that address the academic as well as the grant round supports and those other kind of outside things, outside things that students may need.
Mm-hmm. Is it your sense that the number, it sounds like 10 grantees, a million dollars, about 100,000 a grantee? Is that about right? Is it your sense that the need is like five times that much, or are you meeting the need, or what's your sense of need?
That is a great question. I appreciate that. Just about the, the current grantees, so the funding amount ranges from $75,000 for one grantee up to $166,000 for another grantee. So I, you know, on average, it's around 100,000 to 120,000 per grantee. I would need to go back and take a look at our financial reports, just to make sure and see kind of the proportion of full-time equivalent versus training or other programs versus maybe funds paid to community partners to help students. But I'm happy to get more detailed information about that.
Okay, thank you. I guess the, the big picture, I think, for me is just, is the money really getting to the students? You know, is it really, because so many things in education, you know, a lot of money is allocated, and of course, the need's always greater than the, than the resource often. And so the question is, does it really benefit a student, a family, and a group of them? And that's what we hope, of course. So thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Board Member Durham?
I have one, actually, request of the Department for the next, for our next meeting, and that is, I would, I don't, I don't know how often it is, but it's certainly several times a month at a minimum, I receive in my email, sometimes an exhaustive 100-page report, sometimes a 10-page report. Because I think most of these, if not all of these grants require a report to the legislature. So what I would like to ask the board as a whole to consider at the next meeting, based on some staff recommendations, is that before any, any report is transmitted to the General Assembly, that'd be brought before this board with a recommendation from staff to be approved by this board. And that recommendation would be either that the goals and objectives of the grant are meritorious, the grant successfully meets these goals, to successfully meet these goals for all Colorado students would cost X, and we recommend that the grant either be, that the grant be terminated and the program implemented, or we reach an opposite conclusion, we're unable to demonstrate the success of the grant. And it's, and it's impossible to calculate what it would cost to do on, on a statewide basis, so that the board, rather than the Department, takes the responsibility. But I think it's time we just stop sending a report to the, to the legislature, because having been over there, I can tell you what happens to these, these reports. You know, if there's a legislator that reads them, I'd be shocked. But there may be one, so I don't want to prejudge everything.
The author usually.
Yeah, the author, and I'll make you a little bet, most of the authors don't read them. But, so that, so that, at least, they've got a recommendation. And we have, we've had an opportunity to say, "It's a great idea, it should be done," or "Not such a great idea, maybe it's time to rethink this." And I think that would, that would help get this whole grant situation under a little better control, because their, their good idea is going to receive some judgment. And this board may take some heat for making that judgment. I don't think that's something, a burden we should put on staff. And we attach the board's recommendation on the grant, and, because I, I don't think it makes any sense to, you know, I don't know, I, to me, it doesn't make any sense to continue this grant for the next 10 years. You know, I think, you, you seem to have reached a conclusion that it works, and I think that's great. And so now let's cost it out and see what it'll take to implement, to have the same success for, success for all kids, and turn it back to the legislature and say, "Here it is." So that's, any rate, what I'd like to see done, and, and I'd like to have that prepared so we could vote on it as to whether or not that's an acceptable board policy at the next meeting.
Thank you. Board Member Scarsaga?
I'm sorry, Ma'am, and then I always turn myself on.
Thinking I'm turning myself on, there we are.
You do not have control.
All right.
Internalize that.
I am trying, exactly, for the next three hours, and then I'm good.
This is control.
I just would, you know, it's interesting. I'm, I'm going to agree with Member Durham here on quite a few of the remarks that he has made. In regards to grant fatigue and being on the district side and working that, it, it, it's, it's, we have been calling for some kind of moratorium for at least a decade. It's, we kind of took up the charge a few years ago, and it just seemed to, it was a good soundbite for a while, and then it just kind of went away. I understand the intent of perhaps a new program. Can we do a grant, try it for a while, evaluate it, make a determination, just as he's proposing? And I believe the legislature just isn't doing that part, right? I tried to propose years ago to have an evaluation department at the legislature, actually. There are other states that do that, that every, so often, every bill that goes through that has an appropriation gets an evaluation, and it's presented to the legislature. I know it would be a lot of work. There is some evaluation with each of these grants already, so that wouldn't be additional work. I think you just definitely have to agree on the outcomes ahead of time, metrics, what, you have to define what success would look like prior to the implementation of the program. And I think we're starting to do that kind of work. So I, I do read, though, and that, I think it requires a commitment from the board, I read every single one of those reports. And it takes me a while. And sometimes they're, they're backlog, but we would have to commit to doing that work. I would do that. I think the design of the delta doctor, or, doctor, mister-
Please.
Mister.
I work for a living.
There you are. I probably would tweak that a little bit.
Ouch.
Yeah, yeah. I am a doctor, and my, and it's actually in research design and methodology, so I won't take offense. But I, so I would want to tweak your design a little bit about your delta. But I think, I'm going to agree that I, I believe there needs to be some kind of message that we just continue to, to get FTE, to run these grants, and the districts have to, and then the grant goes away, but the program's working, so then we have to call the FTE that we were using from the grant from general fund, which is pulling money away from other programs, and it just is so cyclic that it just can't continue, especially in our funding stream.
Other problem, though, is it's unclear, at least it's been unclear to me, when there's a new bill for a grant, what the author, authors of the grant expect as an outcome.
And it shouldn't be there.
I'd sure like to encourage that forum bill. It's granted that there's some clarity as to what the legislature, what are the results the legislature expects, because that helps give us some direction of what the measures are that we need to look at, what the outcomes are that are intended. Uh-oh, Mr. Durham?
Well, I think, and I appreciate the support, and, and the metrics is, is important, and I certainly don't know what they should be in every instance. But I think Ms. Ongard here laid out a pretty good measure of things that were successful. I mean, I, I thought they, I thought, you know, taking those at face value, that's, that's, that's good work. So we know that, we, we can all, we can all look at those things and say, "Yeah, those are positive outcomes." So the question then is, what's the cost of those positive outcomes? And, and how can they be implemented on a broader basis? And that's partly, and I will commit to reading the grant reports, if they're going to mean something, and, and mean something to us as well, because right now, I don't. It's just not a good investment of time, because, you know, staff's administering the grant, the legislature continues the grant, nobody has any real commentary on it, and it just goes on and on. And the next grant come, and I, I'll bet you, we have 10 grant bills next year. I don't know how many of them will pass, but if there's money available, there'll be more, I can guarantee you. And so I, I think the only way we can get this under control is if, and I think evaluation, and it's too bad the legislature doesn't do it, but if they're not going to, I don't think it's that hard for us to do, at least, on most of these. And there may be some of these grants that don't lend itself to this. I, I don't know. I would suspect some are going to be very hard to evaluate effectiveness. But we ought to try. And, and I don't think it adds dramatically to our workload, because I think some of the calculations will be simple and easy, and those that aren't, maybe we should have significant discussions of. And I'm sorry I've taken so much time with this, but I just, I, I'm just tired of sitting here approving grants, year after year, meeting after meeting, without, you know, what's the point? And we need to have a point. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Scheffel, your hand is raised.
I apologize. I, I was able to ask my question. I should have lowered it. Thank you.
Okay. I don't even know how you did that, but congratulations.
[laughter]
It does work, if I'm looking. So the motion on the floor is to approve the notice of rulemaking made by Board Member McClellan, seconded by Board Member Scarsaga and Esser. Would you call the roll, please?
Board Member Durham?
Yes.
Board Member Esser. Sorry, Board Member Scarsaga?
Yes.
Board Member Esser?
Yes.
Board Member McClellan?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes.
Board Member Scheffel?
Yes.
And Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now have a presentation on the preliminary 2022 transitional framework results. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am going to turn this over to Ms. Lisa Medler and Marie Hutchinson. Or, yeah, she'll be in the area.
She's hiding.
She's back there. Come up so we can all see her smiling face.
Yes.
But, just give me a sec. Well, this is a little different. I need to set up a little differently. Okay. Madam Chair, thank you. Members of the board, thank you for the time. Is this how I'm advancing the, is this advancing something? So we're going to cover the preliminary frameworks data. And just as a reminder, I am Lisa Medler. I'm the Executive Director of Accountability and Continuous Improvement. I have my colleague, Marie Hutchinson, here, who's the supervisor of the Accountability Analytics Team. I'll do the majority of the talking here, but you know she's, she's really the, the brains behind a lot of these numbers. So if I need to, I will definitely pull her in as you ask questions. Okay. Where am I? I just-
Technology, we love you.
I'm so sorry. My apologies. Okay, great.
Now we-
Okay, so this is just a quick overview of what I'll be covering. So I am going to acknowledge that we're going to all dust off the cobwebs a little bit. It's been a little while since we've done this kind of presentation. So I will give you an overview of the, the framework process. Then we will dive into the data. That's where we'll look at numbers and charts, both at the district level and at the school level. Then we'll get into a teensy bit on Request to Reconsider. My assumption is you are interested in eligibility for Request to Reconsider, given our conversations earlier in the year. And then we will just hit timeline and a quick thing on resources. So the bulk of it'll be on the, on the numbers and the graphs.
Just a second.
Okay, so just taking a step back, I want to orient us to our Colorado accountability system. We are going to be focusing here today at that state identification level. As a reminder, we have the Elementary and Secondary Act that also has requirements around identification of schools. We align as much as possible, but some of those calculations by law need to be different. So, but today, I'm just going to focus on the state portion of that. And then, as I mentioned, we really do focus on alignment as much as possible. So once we get those identifications, everything comes back together, regardless of state or federal, really focus on those supports in a much more integrated fashion. Okay. And then for our State Accountability Act, which is over a decade old now, I believe, we are expected to provide an evaluation of schools and districts on an annual basis, unless there's a pandemic, apparently. So this is where the school and district performance frameworks come into play. I think a big purpose of this system is to identify schools and districts with the greatest needs, so that we can make sure that we're directing resources and any supports there. And then certainly you're aware of your role in intervening when needed. So as a reminder, we do have this other law that came into play this year. We've talked about this a couple times, about transitioning back into accountability after the pause for two years. So the frameworks themselves should look pretty similar to what everyone has experienced in the past. Those cuts are remaining the same. I would say the biggest feature of this transitional system is the fact that those on performance watch, pride improvement, turnaround, on watch, that clock status was paused again for this transitional year. So nobody could automatically advance on the clock, meaning that they could not move on their years on the clock, nor could they automatically exit the clock. The Request to Reconsider process has reopened, and there is a possibility there for them to then adjust their clock status through that process. This is where you, as a board, added that 90% total participation threshold to be able to participate in Request to Reconsider. And then there's a, a few other things in there as well. We added a growth participation rate for informational purposes, really as an acknowledgement of the impacts of the pause and some of the assessment pause as well on the growth. Just to remind you, we use, we're using 2021 and 2022 data in there, so that 2021 data had the alternating assessment schedules. So I think there was a real eagerness to make sure that we were looking at participation rates, so that as- sure that we were looking at participation rates, so that as people were interpreting those results, they would have that available. And then there's a few other things there. One is a clarification for you and, and your use of 2022 data as you're considering your role in directing action. And then expanding the school transformation grants, we've included those grants in the easy process to also include improvement, I think really as an acknowledgement that there's, there's work to be done in the field, especially given the last few years. Okay, so the frameworks themselves. So as a reminder, we have three main performance indicators: academic achievement, academic growth, post-secondary workforce readiness. This chart is really here as a reference for you, as a reminder on the data sources that are pulled in. So those are listed for you, as well as the weighting associated with each of the indicators. Notice that there's the elementary and middle school level, and then the high school and district level, since we need to pull in post-secondary workforce readiness for that. Always want to make sure I am pointing out that the largest proportion goes to academic growth. So this is where my colleague here behind me, her team does a lot of work. I've just whizzed through a lot of months of work and calculations that they do, and then roll up into these ratings for schools and for districts. So similar ratings for schools and for districts with the addition of that accredited with distinction for districts. And then as a reminder, because a big purpose of our system is to look at our systems with the greatest needs, that priority improvement and turnaround, or accredited with priority improvement and turnaround typically are our most focused areas. I'm going to go into a little bit more depth on what we mean by performance watch this year, because it's a little bit different, given the last few years. We also have descriptors that we add to the, the plan types. These are just descriptors, and do not necessarily get into the actual rating calculations. This is information for people that are taking a look at the, at the frameworks. We really want to highlight the participation, so that when they're interpreting the data, they are aware of participation is lower than that 95%. So that's why that's there. We typically have the decrease due to participation, but for this year during the transition year, we've removed that particular requirement as schools and districts are coming back up to speed on how to really focus on their coding. So that you will see is a little bit different from previous years. Okay, so let's get into those graphs and numbers. I'm going to start off with districts. So you will see the number and percentages of districts at each of the accreditation ratings. I'm going to get into comparisons to previous years here in a second, but you can, you at least have those numbers as a reference for you here. Quick note, as we were looking at this, we might need to make a slight adjustment to this. The numbers are correct, but we might need to make a slight adjustment to the graphic itself. So you might see an updated slide a little bit later. Yeah.
I have a, I want to ask this question, but this is right here on my mind. If, for, that's a large percentage of districts, right? Forty percent of districts didn't have enough data to run the frameworks. If they had received the same framework rating as last year, their previous rating, what would have, would these numbers, distinction, accredited, improvement, would they have looked that dramatically different? I'm just curious, you know, just a curiosity question that, if you don't have it now, I would just be interested to see, but okay.
Madam Chair, that is a great question. No, I don't have that data right now, but we could certainly do a little bit of digging in as a follow-up for you.
Thank you. Because I know, you know, there's a pretty significant difference. It may not, if they had had enough data, you know, we could just ballpark. My data people are.
Marie says yes, we can do that. So, and I'm glad that you highlighted that, because that is definitely something that I want to.
No, I'd like, I thought it was a very good question. I'd like to see it too, but as long as we're interrupting. Is there, is there an explanation for insufficient data? Is it just, just kids didn't test? Is that, that's the bottom line?
Madam Chair, it's a great segue.
Parental exclusion or other, or non-parental exclusion?
Yeah, so I would, yeah, so that, I really do want to focus on that 40%. So I'm going to answer your question in just a second.
Okay.
So, so I do want to point out that, you know, you do see a decline in the, the ratings that are assigned from previous years. I think that was kind of an assumption, given the circumstances of the last few years. But I also want to add a caution before feeling too much doom and gloom because of that 40, close to 40% at insufficient state data. We just didn't have enough information for those sites to assign. So we don't know where they would actually have been assigned had they had enough data. Now, the explanation for that insufficient state data and the increase, the first one, and the one that explains the bulk of it, is as a reminder, we could only run year, one-year frameworks. We just had enough data for one-year frameworks. We typically do three-year frameworks, where we can aggregate data over time, which really helps our small districts then have enough data to report. So we knew we were going to have an increase in insufficient state data assignments. That explains the bulk of them. There are some examples where participation in the last year to two years was a factor, and why they are getting insufficient state data, but I would say the, the bigger bulk of them is because of this one-year versus three-year.
And then carry over for another year because it'll be?
Potentially. So, so we'll probably get more assignments next year with enough.
By definition, they need three.
With two years. Well, with two years of data, we might be able to pull some back in and assign ratings.
Your ends get big enough?
Yep. And then, but then probably it'll take another year to really get a better sense of, of that. So this is part of this transition back from this pause that we're going to see.
And then let me, in, in what you've seen, I have a, I mean, the number of enrollees is, students is declining. We know that. Some of it may be demographics, some of it may be choice, some of it may be, who knows? So, yeah, and I, I detect a greater reluctance or more pushback against testing after what we've gone through in the last few years than I detected before. So as, as a general rule, we have lower participation rates. Question is, how much lower have they been? And, and is there any, and is it possible to attribute those at this point to parental refusals, or is it, or is it just, they're just not taking the test? Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I think that's, that's a great line of questioning. I think there's probably some additional follow-up that we could do to dig in a little bit deeper. I will say, there's a considerable amount of noise right now in the data that we need to also be careful with. We know that some districts have had coding issues, so we need to help them remember how to do that. And, you know, we don't want to mistake that for participation issues. But I think we could, you know, I got to look at my colleague here. I think we could probably do some analysis to tease out a little bit about what you're asking about, and, and the impact of, of some of what you're sensing.
Thank you.
The coding challenges, and you've gone back to the districts, have they been able to correct that, or is, has the time span been too long to be sure, whether they got it, got it right or got it wrong? Did they code it wrong, or did they not code it wrong?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So they, there's an opportunity during the assessment window to make those corrections. Again, some of the cobwebs, we're still, we're all learning and we're all clearing them. In some cases, districts didn't realize that it had implications for accountability. Now they're seeing the numbers and they're realizing there's some work to be done on coding. So we, we have high hopes walking into this next year to, to work much more intently with districts around that.
Go ahead.
Great. So, a little bit on participation, and I want to contextualize this with some of what you would have heard around an increase in statewide participation with, on state assessments. Remember, this is around accountability, and we have that 95% participation threshold. This is total participation, not including parent excusals. So we are seeing a difference between 2019 and 2022. So just to be aware of that, but that's of districts meeting that 95% participation. So, you know, work to be done there. And as a reminder, we have pulled out that decrease due to participation, so that's not being factored in for 2022. All right, let me talk about performance watch. And so you've seen some of this transitional system and the impacts of the pause on things like the assignment of insufficient state data. Well, we're also having some transition issues with performance watch. And I think that's a direct result of the pause and then this transition, where we are pausing the automatic advancement on the clock. So we've got some scenarios that are occurring that we had never anticipated originally. So some of the reporting that you're going to, I'm going to be sharing with you a little bit later, is going to look different than ever in the past, because we've got some scenarios that we were not expecting. So I think these are just, these will start to write themselves over time, but just wanted to point some of them out to you. So in those examples, that first, School A, and this is districts, I apologize, but it just seems easier to talk about schools as an example. We have a school that was priority improvement year three in 2021. With the preliminary frameworks, they moved to improvement. That's great celebration. They still remain at year three because of that pause on the automatic advancement. Now, Request to Reconsider is set up, so in this scenario, they are eligible to participate. They're able to then move to on watch. That is kind of how our system ideally is designed to work. School B, we have an example where we actually had somebody already on watch, and they were on improvement. Unfortunately, in 2022, they slid back into priority improvement, but because of that pause, you know, the pause on advancement, they're still on watch. They still earned that year. They're not eligible to participate in Request to Reconsider, so they actually are priority improvement on watch. This is not supposed to happen, but this is where we're at. So they still get that year, so we'll have to see what happens with them in 2023. So.
And you said they're not entitled to support?
They are entitled to support. And this next slide, I will, I have, I have this all lined out for you. I'm just letting you know that we've got some, some odd pairings, because the plan type and the year on the clock is somewhat not, they're not working in tandem quite yet again. We'll start fixing that over this year and next year.
I think I need to ask, why, if we're not using these 2022 ratings, why are they not still on the improvement? Why are they being moved to the priority improvement if we're not recognizing the ratings according to statute?
Madam Chair, so they earned points for priority improvement, so they are priority improvement. The, the law is adjusting the clock status side of performance watch, not the plan type side. And so this is getting us into situations, and this next slide I'll also lay out for you, a little bit of this, a little bit about how this is playing out. So we are really treating this as, we are trying to make sure that they are eligible for support, and really emphasizing that TA, that technical assistance and support as much as possible. There are still requirements attached to that plan type, but we're really trying to focus on the, making sure they're getting support and technical assistance this year.
All right, so if I'm a priority, or if I'm a improvement school 2021, and I'm a turnaround school 2022, I'm not one year on the clock, however.
Correct. So if you look at example C?
In the, in the following year, I'm, let's say, next year, I'm actually improvement. It's like the turnaround never happened.
Exactly.
But I'm not year one on the clock. But I am turnaround, and you're saying that we then need to follow through with the requirements of doing a turnaround plan and all those pieces?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. And that, you've just taught me with example C?
Yep.
Right, where you're going to see this new notation of year zero?
Okay.
Which acknowledges that. And, and you just, you walked through it beautifully. They would be released, they would not be considered on the clock, they, but they are eligible for those supports, and then have to do some additional planning, and they're, they have to adjust to some of the additional requirements in their plan. So, and we do give them an extension, I will tell you that as well. So they are also getting this privilege of an extension on their plan, so that we can work them a little bit longer, so that we can dig in with their, with them on their data a little bit too.
Okay.
Okay. This is a graphic that describes what I just talked through with those examples. And so I've highlighted that year zero example that is unique to 2022. And then, as well as, we have examples of schools and districts on performance and improvement. Year one, year two, they are not on watch, and it's because we are holding them this year. Hopefully Request to Reconsider will address some of that, but it won't address all of it before they are able to move to on watch. Okay, so just, just some differences in our transitional system here. This was a slide that I mentioned. I'm not going to go into all this detail, but if you want to dig in, you can see where we have really tried to systematically go through and identify for these different situations, which requirements apply, and what supports they're eligible for. So that's all available to you here as well.
Ms. Medler, the communication expectations, is that where you have to tell your community where you are?
Madam Chair, yes.
Which is in year, what, two or three?
Uh, year one. It begins in year one.
Oh, so year one?
But you'll notice that if you're on watch, we're saying, you don't, you don't need to do that. And again, we're emphasizing the technical assistance side, and really emphasizing flexibility, so that it's not this uncomfortable situation, just given current circumstances.
And this is districts?
This is, this is districts, well, and schools, really. Yeah. Okay, so I'm going to keep breaking down the, the districts on performance watch for you. So you've got the numbers and the percentages here. You'll see that new blue band added from what you would have seen in the past, that includes that year zero. So these are the ones that are not officially on the clock, but they are on priority improvement or turnaround. And then if you look at this bar chart, you can see that when we look at last year's ratings, it's pretty similar. The big increase is really attributed to those year zeros. So the, the ones that are newly identified, and potentially, you know, hopefully with some assistance and some of their own hard work, they will have an improved rating for next year, and this, that would go away.
So in light of all the national press, et cetera, this is what we would have expected, right? That there would be some districts, a few, that would be year zero, haven't been there before, but because of the termination of in-class learning, those kids have lost some skill, and possibly could, with intense learning, could actually get back on. Do we know how close they were before? Were these borderline, or have you guys looked at that, whether these were borderline districts anyway?
So, Madam Chair, that, I, I think that, I think that's something that we could, again, I think we could take a closer look at, and let you know, by looking at like the percentage of points, how close some, some, some of these districts were, if you want to take a closer look at them. Happy to do that, too.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to schools. You're, as I'm going through this, you're going to see the same routine, and you're going to see probably some of the same patterns that we just talked through. So for schools, you, you have the number of schools that are in each of the plan types, and then the, the percentage associated with it. Again, still the majority at performance and improvement, but pretty big number for insufficient state data. And if you look at the comparison, certainly larger for insufficient state data than ever in the past. Same, same conversation that we just had. Okay?
Insufficient state data doesn't just mean in-size, correct? Or not correct?
So, Madam Chair, when we say insufficient state data, what we really mean is, we did not have enough data to be able to assign them a plan type or a rating.
Which could mean?
And there's different reasons why, whether it's.
Could be, could be in-size, or it could be. What, what percentage of participation did a district or school has, have to have in order for you to give it a rating?
Less than 25%. In reading, you know, English Language R. In reading, you know, English language arts and in math.
Less than? So fewer than 25% of the students participated in 320 schools?
No, a number of those, there's insufficient data because the N is so small that you had to have three years' worth and we didn't have three years' worth. I think we would appreciate that being broken.
So Board Member Durham, I think this is something that we said we would tease out for you is, you know, when, when do we attribute it to N size and when do we attribute it to participation issues?
Is it, in, in rough, really in rough numbers, the, the percentage of 17% looks extraordinarily large for schools with not enough data or too small in N size. But as a practical matter, in terms of percentage of students affected by this insufficient data, it's relatively small on a statewide basis.
Madam Chair.
Do we have any big districts that fit into this category? Any of the top 10?
Off the top of my head, no big districts, but that is, that's actually a really good question and I think we could take a look at, you know, because we're, we're aggregating districts and not looking at necessarily the whole population of students. So that's something that we could, you know, look at the number of districts and then tell you that, that enrollment.
I think, I think it would be very helpful because you can almost label this insufficient data as some sort of crisis that really adversely affects all the other things we're doing. Or it's 5% or fewer of the total students in the state and maybe it's a problem, but it's, and it may be a problem that's better solved by removing, removing, by just basing all of your percentage assignments based on those you do have data for and we can gradually figure out how to deal with the small N sizes. Because this makes it look like a problem. And if it was 17% of the students in Colorado, I'd say that's a pretty serious problem. If it's 5%, I'm a lot less concerned. So, anyway.
I was going to say, I, I've looked at Denver's and there, there are a few small schools inside of Denver that didn't have it, but most of the schools did. And that's what you're going to find. So I think you're probably correct.
But if you go back to the district number, it was, what was the number of districts? 39% of districts. I mean, that's a huge number. So if, at 39% of the districts, you know, if it's the smallest 39 districts, it's not terribly relevant if it's.
Over 100 of our districts are very small.
Yeah.
So.
So in terms, in terms of, and maybe we ought to try and see if we can refocus this on percentage of students in some way, at least, at least so we know that kind of in a sidebar of some fashion. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So again, the participation numbers, schools compared to districts, this, this looks a little bit heartier, but still, when looking at 2019, you know, we've got just about half of schools there meeting the 95% of total participation versus 75. So just so you have that information. Okay, so we are now disaggregating it more by Performance Watch. I will let you know that this slide continues on to the next slide, so there are more numbers coming here. So again, the vast majority of schools are not on Performance Watch. You'll see that blue band that we've added for newly identified schools that are at that year zero, just like districts. We still have 29 schools on watch. This is really carryover from 2019. As we start to transition and do Request to Reconsider, we'll probably see that number grow, is my prediction. And then we have this breakdown by the years on the clock. Again, numbers will probably adjust with Request to Reconsider as well. We've got some, I think, some good news there where we, we see some schools that are eligible potentially to move to on watch or to exit the clock. But you have, at least with the preliminary results, the numbers here are available to you.
This is just an opinion question for you, but we know that, we know that we have 60% of the kids essentially don't read a grade level. And when you look at the percentage of districts that we consider to be in trouble in some fashion, is, is there, is there a monumental disconnect between, between the ratings we're giving schools based on actual outcomes versus what we know, which is really very small and that fit into the categories that really need help? But clearly we have a significant percentage of our students that would appear to need the help. And it's that disconnect that I think, at least in my mind, affects the credibility of our entire accountability system. And just like you're, are you concerned about that disconnect or, and if so, is there a way to remedy it?
Madam Chair, my favorite opinion questions in these meetings. I'm going to, I'm going to point out a couple of things. One is, these ratings are about the whole school and not just focused on a particular content area. We're looking at reading, writing, math, and then science when, when we've got those, those scores again. So we do have that. The other thing that I want to point out is that because we wait growth, we really are trying to say that we are giving credit to schools and districts, taking the kids that they get and then giving them credit for if they're able to move them. So I think between the growth model and our rating system, we're able to actually show you through these ratings when we're seeing that progress. Now, what you're getting at is a specific issue, which I think everyone is concerned about and it's definitely been a priority for this board. So certainly that's something that we can talk about more, about how you want to adjust the system to really call that out. But this system, I think, is how it was designed, to look at the whole system and then to really credit growth. I think that what we're trying to measure, we are measuring and this is what you're seeing.
Thank you.
All right, so here's the, the stacked chart again, so that you can see the difference between last year and this year on schools that are on Performance Watch. So this is just the schools that are on Performance Watch. This one's probably, I'm going to take a little bit more time then to do with the districts because I want to point out, we've got that blue band, that's the ones that are year zero. They were, they're, so they're newly identified. They were not on Performance Watch before, so there's, there's a good chunk there. Then we have schools that are part improvement turnaround, right? They're, that's, that's actually diminishing, so there's some potential good news there. We're seeing a diminishing there even despite the pandemic. And then you've got a really nice, healthy, green band in there. And these are the schools that actually improved to priority improvement and improvement. They, during the pandemic, they are considered to be on Performance Watch because they are still being held because of our current law. This is where Request to Reconsider is going to come in, so hopefully we'll see some changes when things are finalized. But I personally was very pleased to see that nice, healthy, green band right there for you. So let's dig in a little bit more into Request to Reconsider and the eligibility there. So just to remind you, right now, districts are looking at their preliminary frameworks. They are, have the ability to let us know if they do not agree, if they have additional information. And then if so, they are able to, to kind of provide their evidence and state their case through the Request to Reconsider process. This is where your addition of the 90% total participation, to be able to participate, comes into play. So there are some that may have a case, but they don't have high enough participation, so we're just having to tell them no. So that's, we're doing a lot of helping districts to figure out who's eligible and who is not. So we will then, for those that are eligible, we will run it through our, our typical process, rigorous process, all those conditions, body of evidence, as well as that path to consider the plan type adjustment. And then we will provide that for you later this fall with our recommendations. So just to break down those numbers a little bit for you, I've got districts in the middle there and schools on the right. So the number of, I listed out the number of districts and schools that are even eligible that meet the 90% threshold, doesn't mean that they're going to get a recommendation, it just means that they are eligible for us to consider their evidence. And then broke it down a little bit more for you, for those that are on Performance Watch, because we know that you probably have a particular interest in those that are trying to exercise that ability to, to either move to on watch or exit Performance Watch altogether. So you've got the numbers for districts and for schools there in the middle. And at the end, you'll see that 65 schools out of the 302 schools on Performance Watch are actually eligible to, because they have an approved plan type, you know, to improvement or performance, and they're meeting that 90% total participation. 65 during the pandemic are eligible. I mean, my assumption is if the districts apply, you know, we will, we will put those in front of you. So that's, I have to tell you, is a larger number than I was expecting. That's impressive, given the last few years. So, you know, trying to end on a positive note, there's, there's some hope there and some movement forward.
My guess is that those are smaller schools, they're elementaries, maybe some middle schools. I can't imagine too many high schools bopping around like that.
Madam Chair.
Just guessing.
To be fair, this is me eyeballing the list. It's pretty diverse.
Cool.
Yeah. You know, around the state. If you want more of a breakdown, we can certainly give it to you, but I mean, my eyeball of it, I was like, okay, yeah, there's some, there's some variety here.
All right.
Ms. Medler, yesterday, when we were talking about significant reading challenges and the assessments, big, long discussion about the assessments that were being used. And the comment was made that those assessments assess skills that are actually not part of our assessments. Now, this is early. What effort has been made to ensure that the additional evidence that's being presented by school districts actually aligns with our standards and what we want kids to know and be able to, so that there's some strong alignment, so that's really good evidence?
Yeah. Madam Chair, really strong alignment. And so I'd say for those body of evidence requests that we are considering, I would say that K2, K3 data, especially the READ Act data, is probably some of the strongest evidence that we're able to consider when we are looking at that.
K3, there is no CSAP. I'm, I'm more thinking about the other grades and, and what we are assessing.
So Madam Chair, this, I'm going to have to defer to my colleagues in the assessment office when we talk about alignment between state assessments.
State assessments and the assessments that are being used as the body of evidence. Because we don't, I guess we do test in third grade. We have CSAP for third grade, but other than that, not, not as much as we were using for the later phase.
Madam Chair, we do, we do use our state assessments as that and we talk, we talk about representativeness in those state assessments. Now, we have a higher bar this time, 90% participation in those. However, I believe there's a requirement in the Request to Reconsider process that any other evidence that they bring must be on a nationally normed assessment. So they can't just bring like teacher quizzes to us. You know, they have to, they have to bring like an NWEA or, and even though NWA isn't perfectly aligned with our standards, like that's why we try to triangulate these different pieces of evidence.
And that's where my question comes from. How much are we doing to?
But we do say it must be nationally normed. We have a high bar on that.
Is there a variety, a large variety of additional data or are there just certain assessments that we accept?
Madam Chair, so I want to really emphasize to you that we, a big rule of Request to Reconsider is that any additional data cannot supplant state data that we have. So that's why I'm really emphasizing like that K2 data. We don't, we don't collect and include in the frameworks, K2 data. And so that's why we really align tightly with our colleagues in, in the, that, that implement the READ Act. So we, we really do focus quite a bit on, on those assessments. Otherwise, it's, it's a little bit harder case to make because we do have assessments in other grades and content areas.
Right. I'm particularly interested in math. To what extent do the math assessments mirror our assessment in math? May or may, it may, may not. One may be questions of understanding versus questions of memorization, for example? Those are very different things and they're different things than, than we are asking for.
And I'm going to defer that a little bit because I really don't want to go off the cuff on that answer.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so just a couple more slides, just a quick timeline as a reminder. We've given you the dates on what's already happened. We have released frameworks publicly and to districts. We will be back in October. This is about thinking about next year, so we need to think about the target setting for next year. So we want to get that on your radar. Request to reconsider applications will be due in October. That'll give us a little bit of time then to present to you, well, actually in December, but in November, for anyone not offering a Request to Reconsider, we will provide you with information on the finalization of schools and districts because there's no reason to hold them up. And then in December, you, we'll present to you our recommendations from Request to Reconsider so that we can finalize all of the plan types for schools and for districts and get accreditation wrapped up as well at the same time. And then finally, we've got some resources just here for your reference. Always happy to talk more. It sounds like we have a few data requests, so we'll, we'll be following up on those. And I'm going to stop here.
So I need to ask Board Member Esser and Board Member Scheffel, I've not been able to see you, I've not heard a peep from you. Do you have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions right now. Thanks for the presentation. It's helpful. I think we have some things to discuss on how to look at these assessments and what these assessments actually measure, but that has time, so thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Scheffel?
Madam Chair, I don't have any additional questions at this time either. I appreciate the detailed presentation. I want to think about it and reflect on it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Board, Board Member Durham?
Sorry, Madam Chair, we're ahead of schedule, so I hate to.
I should have talked slower.
I thought I could filibuster or something. I have a question, really, I want to go back to slide number 20, number 10, page 10 on the slide. I have a question really for our legal counsel for Ms. Bird. The, as I, I mean, we have a system that assigns five ratings to districts and four to schools. And those are enumerated in statute, I think, as to what we have to use, if I remember that correctly. Is that your understanding?
Madam Chair, yes, that's correct.
And so we have to base certain decisions based on this. Is there anything that would prohibit us? Because the one thing that these ratings are for certain is not helpful to parents. Because they really, I don't think they mean anything if you, if you say, well, you're, you're, you know, you're credited with distinction as a district. Well, what, what does that really mean? Well, it probably means you're pretty good, but how good? And, and actually, given the percentage of districts in that, you would, would be, it's a higher percentage than if you were grading on an A to F, the old bell curve that we used to use with equal percentages getting Bs and Ds and Fs and As and the balance in the middle. So, so I don't think that, it doesn't mean much. Is there anything the statute would prohibit us from developing a rating system that used names of, rename some of these like A, B, C, D, E, A, B, C, D, F? We could have our own parallel rating system.
Madam Chair, I, I think it's an excellent question. I think it's something I would like to spend some time thinking about and making sure that we get you a correct answer before we go off the cuff here.
Designed for next meeting. Because I just, I guess I'm having one of those days where, you know, it's bothered me for, you know, you can, you can tell a parent that their, their school is on, or district is on an improvement plan. Now, I would interpret that as god awful as a parent, but when you look at it, it's in the middle. Well, what's being in the middle mean? We, we really have developed, we have a set of, just be blunt about it, we have a set of ratings designed to keep the adults from being accountable for the outcomes because they're designed for nobody, nobody in the real world to be able to understand what they are. And I think that's a problem we need to start solving. And I really don't want to go to the legislature to try and solve it. It's, you know, is there something we could put out that would be more meaningful and more descriptive and in some ways really provide parents with a better ability to judge the effectiveness of the school and district that's providing their children's education? So I just asked that question if there's, if it's. So I just ask that question if there's, if it's possible. I don't know whether it's politically possible, but I'd like to know if it's legally possible, if we could go down that road. So, thank you.
Board Member Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Ms. Medler, I, I appreciate all the work you have done. And I, I really appreciate the phone call way back at the beginning of this when, when you explained how difficult this was going to be because of all the pauses and, and whatever. But on one of these slides, number one, it's not the first slide, but it, it mentioned the school closures. I don't know how many students are in those schools. And if they go to another school, how that might affect the performance of the rece, receiving school. If, if anything stands out, that would be something I would be interested in, in hearing about. Also, is there a way we will, at some time, get the names of these districts? And, I mean, just to compare them, are these the same ones from before? I mean, we had the numbers, but we don't know which ones. And we have the school, the school numbers, but we don't know which ones. And, and are you gonna compare to see how they grow or how they have really taken a dip? And, I mean, there's a lot of, of things that are moving parts, but it's gonna give us some idea of looking be, before this pause and then two or three years down the road, seeing this overall comparison. Do you have a comment on that?
Madam Chair, uh, so on the school closures, I think we'd probably want to do a little bit more follow-up to see what exactly you're interested in, in following up. So happy to, happy to do some more analysis there. Um, on the, the names of the districts, we do have a file that is public. And I am, I can, it's, it's linked here, but I am happy to send it to you as well, so that you can actually see on the preliminary frameworks where, where districts and schools are landing. So that is available. Um, when we do the final presentation, you know, more like December, then we'll do a little bit more of the...
Compares, yeah.
Hopefully, you know, some celebrations in there. But we can do a little bit more in there as well of, of, because I know in particular you're interested in those that are, that have board orders and, and are on watch and things like that. So we can, we can do a little bit more there, too.
Good. Yeah, I'll, I'll wait. Thank you. And, and I just want to make a comment for, of Board Member Durham's statements. And I, I visited a school that had a big banner up. This school has been awarded performance, you know. And I looked at the school and I looked it up and it, actually, that happened ten years before I got there and saw it. And they, if they get it once, that's the thing that the parents see. And I have had some ask me about that sort of thing. So it is interesting what the parents do pay attention to and what the school advertises. I just wanted to throw that out. Thank you.
Any other questions, colleagues? Thank you, Ms. Medler. So we'll now break early for lunch and then go right into executive session. Anticipate being back. What do you guess? Ordered one? Half an hour early? Lunch has been ordered. If you're buying, that's different.
Well, that's a lot.
Is lunch even here?
See, we have to go out.
Well, maybe we could do executive session, um, because I'm sure lots of us who are traveling back wouldn't mind getting off early and getting through the traffic a little early, just try to move things through and, um, do executive session first, then do lunch. Then we'll be a little ahead of schedule for our progress monitoring update.
Thank you. So Ms. Cordial, can you read the notice of topics for us for executive session, please?
An exec, an executive session has been noticed for today's state board meeting in conformance with 24-6-402-3A Roman numeral two CRS to receive legal advice from an attorney and to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal law, rule, or state statutes pursuant to 24-6-402-3A Roman numeral three CRS. The topic for discussion will be the educator disciplinary matters on the agenda, on the agenda items 5.23 and 5.24 from Wednesday's agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to convene an exec session?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
At 12:12 on September 15, 2022, the Board had concluded its executive session and now we are back on the regular board meeting record.
Thank you. We have two items from the consent agenda to complete from yesterday. Board member Rankin, would you be good enough to make the motions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For agenda item 5.23, I move to approve the department's recommendation to revoke-
The license and instruct the department's staff and the State Attorney General's office to prepare the documents necessary to request a formal hearing for the revocation of the license holder's professional teacher license.
It's a proper motion. Do I have a second? Second. Thank you. Call the roll, please. Ms. Corzal.
Board member Durham?
Yes.
Board member Skarsgå?
Yes.
Board member Esser?
Yes.
Board member McClellan?
Yes.
Board member Rankin?
Yes.
Board member Shuffle?
Yes.
And board member Schroeder?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Board member Rankin?
For agenda item 5.24, I move to approve the department's recommendation and direct the board chair to sign the stipulation and final agency order, which will result in the voluntary surrender of the license holder's professional teacher license.
Thank you. That's a proper motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Board member Durham?
Yes.
Board member Skarsgå?
Yes.
Board member Esser?
Yes.
Board member McClellan?
Yes.
Board member Rankin?
Yes.
Board member Shuffle?
Yes.
Board member Schroeder?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously.
Thank you. So our last presentation of the day is on the Accountability Clock Board Order, Progress Monitoring. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a part of our regular updates to everyone who's on the clock and progress monitoring that our staff does. So I'm going to turn this over to Rhonda Hannaford and Lindsay Jekyll.
Thank you. Wow, what's up? Thank you, Commissioner, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Lindsay Jekyll, and I'm joined today by Dr. Rhonda Hannaford, and we're here this afternoon, as the commissioner said, to provide the board with an update on the progress of those schools and districts with board-directed action. So Dr. Hannaford is going to walk us through some background, and then I'll pick it up to provide progress updates about each of the schools and districts. After five years of low performance, schools and districts must have action directed by the board that is designed to improve student achievement. So the schools currently receiving progress monitoring all reached year four, five, or beyond in 2019. As schools and districts implement their board-directed actions, the department provides support and also monitors the progress of school and district improvement and provides support as needed. We're here today to provide you a brief update on that process, which we do twice a year. Our purpose is to continue to create transparency around this work and keep the board informed. We also want an opportunity to celebrate success and acknowledge the hard work of the teachers, leaders, and the district staff. Our progress monitoring report focuses on the 2021-2022 school year. So as another brief reminder, the board has the following pathway options to select from. The board must direct at least one of these pathways for district schools, charter schools, and districts that reach year five and beyond on the state accountability clock. Per Senate Bill 22-054, the state board can now direct conversion to a community school, to a community school to district-run public schools or at the district level. So before we dive in on all the progress monitoring, we wanted to thank the district and school staff that we work with as we work with them in progress monitoring. The 2021-2022 school year proved to be another challenging year, as we all know, and our schools and districts worked extremely hard to support students as they returned to in-person learning and ensure that they had the staffing needed to effectively support their students while they were still rising, or still navigating the rise and fall of COVID waves and, in some cases, supporting students who had been disconnected from school for over a year. So we wanted to spotlight a few bright spots. So first, there were three schools in this group that earned a performance or improvement rating on the 2022 preliminary SPF. Central High School in Pueblo earned an improvement rating, and Minequa Elementary earned a performance rating. The very sweet photo on the top right over here shows Central seniors supporting Minequa's students in their elementary continuation ceremony. And Bill Metz Elementary in Montavista also earned a performance rating on the 2022 preliminary SPF. Notably, Bill Metz had also earned a performance rating last year through the request to reconsider process. So these schools have continued a trajectory of improved performance through the implementation of really focused plans with strong leadership, and we're thrilled to celebrate their progress. Thank you, Lindsay. All right, so we are going to start today by sharing an overview of the performance frameworks for the group of districts and schools being progress monitored by the department. And so as you heard earlier today, CDE has calculated transitional frameworks for this year. For schools with state board orders, some sites that were on watch in 2021 can submit a request to reconsider. If approved by the board, this would officially exit them from Performance Watch and end their state board order. order. Some sites may submit a request to reconsider, which would move them to on watch, but not yet in their order. In addition, this year, we will continue to work with any sites that may want to request a change to their state board orders as they've been implementing some of the same orders for a few years now, and their needs might have changed. So this slide shows the preliminary performance framework results for the districts and schools with state board orders. The comparison in the chart is the two thousand and twenty-one school and district performance frameworks, which in most cases was carried over from the two thousand and nineteen and then the two thousand and twenty frameworks. These ratings will become final following the request to reconsider process in December, so there may be some changes. Within the chart, you will see that there are four schools that improved their points earned, and there are three schools that were able to improve their plan-type rating. One note that we have at the bottom of this slide is that we do continue to include the Aguilar School District on this list. While their order has expired, they have not yet fully exited performance watch. They earned an insufficient state date rating, state date rating, this year, so they will be held at year eight on watch. So this table shows all of the schools and districts with active state board orders. The department has a variety of mechanisms that it uses to monitor the progress of schools and districts, including in-site or in-person site visits, classroom observations, review of local data, conversations, and in some cases, we do interview staff and leadership and managers or partner organizations. Each school and district is assigned a staff person on our team, who we refer to as a turnaround support manager, who walks alongside the school or the district in the planning and implementation of their board-directed action. Our turnaround support managers provide a written progress monitoring report to the board twice a year or as requested by the state board. In your board docs, you have progress monitoring reports for each school or district with additional information about that site. When the team is in these schools doing their in-person visits, what they're looking for among some of the things is evidence of implementation of the components that are included in the board order and/or the pathway plan. They're also looking for components that are associated with strong turnaround progress. So specifically, they're looking for strong leadership, intensive support for that leadership from the district, and improvement on leading indicators such as attendance rates, behavior rates, and local assessment data. So because we know these are foundational to sustained performance, the team focuses in these areas. We'll turn it back to Lindsay, who will share some details of each of the schools. Great. So you'll recall that there are essentially four possible tracks that schools and districts can be on, and the department monitors sites on each track, though the dosage and support may vary depending on where they're at. So sites that are on watch are ones that have improved their performance but have not yet fully come off the clock. Those early action ones are the sites that opted into a directed action before, in year three or in year four. We have the traditional year-five hearings for schools that reach the end of the accountability clock in year five, and then rehearings, which are schools or districts that have to come before the board again because their ratings have not yet improved. So now that frameworks are resuming for the first time since two thousand and nineteen, some schools will exit on watch based on the request to reconsider process built into the two thousand and twenty-two frameworks, and other schools may move between these tracks with, beginning with the two thousand and twenty-three frameworks. So in the following slides, I'll talk through each of the school's order implementation and provide a brief overview of their two thousand and twenty-two performance framework and any implications for this rating on their state board order. But detailed information about each of these sites is included in the progress monitoring reports on board docs. So again, we'll begin with Minnaqua Elementary in Pueblo sixty, which has been implementing partial management with Relay since two thousand and nineteen. Minnaqua has continued with strong implementation of their plan that has a deep focus on instructional systems. Minnaqua has demonstrated high growth on local assessments as well as high growth on CMAAS. On the two thousand and twenty-two preliminary SPF, Minnaqua was performance, year six on watch with an approaching rating in achievement and exceeds rating in growth. Minnaqua had twenty-five, or ninety-five percent total participation on the math and ELA assessments during the spring two thousand and twenty-two assessment window, and sixty-one percent growth participation in English and eighty-four percent in math. So they're eligible for the expedited request to reconsider process and will fully exit the clock and thus end their board order. Now we'll shift our focus to the next group of schools, the early action schools. There are three schools that have opted to come before the board before reaching year five: Gateway High School and North Middle School, both in Aurora, and then Mitchell High School in Colorado Springs. The two Aurora schools opted into early action in year four, and in two thousand and nineteen, the board approved their management pathway proposals. So we'll start with Gateway. After implementing the board's order for two years with communities and schools as a partial manager, Aurora Public Schools returned to the board in September of two thousand and twenty-one to, for Gateway High School to request a change to its order. So they are currently implementing a partial management plan with an organization called Zero Dropouts to address academic systems and recovery needs and support stronger school systems overall. Zero Dropouts started in October of two thousand and twenty-one after the state board hearing, and the district also identified a permanent principal last fall who started in January of two thousand and twenty-two and who returned this school year. Zero, the school and Zero Dropouts will continue their partnership in this coming school year. Lastly, as a part of your two thousand and twenty-one state board order, you requested that Gateway return for an update to the board this school year that's preceded by a state review panel visit. And finally, on the two thousand and twenty-two preliminary SPF, Gateway was turnaround year five with ratings of does not meet for achievement and approaching in growth and post-secondary workforce readiness. The school did have low, lower participation in assessments. Gateway had seventy percent total participation in, on the math and ELA assessments, and twenty-three percent growth participation in English and math. So now talking a little bit about North Middle School. North Middle School has a partial management plan with MGT to support four key areas centered on instruction. Overall, North has made progress in implementing, implementation of their, their partner, their work with MGT and has strengthened its planning and implementation of data-driven instruction across the school. MGT and staff, school and staff leadership have worked closely to provide a more consistent and focused walkthrough, a student-focused walkthrough process, and made adjustments to their instructional systems throughout the year. In addition, teachers are receiving individualized and targeted planning and instructional support. Interim data is showing stronger staff retention and stronger growth within year on interim assessments than each of the previous three years. Aurora has indicated that they will continue to work with MGT in year four of their partnership with a focus on building the capacity of instructional leadership. On the two thousand and twenty-two preliminary SPF, North was priority improvement year five with ratings of does not meet for achievement and approaching in growth. Well, North had higher participation on the assessments and about forty-six percent growth participation on the math and ELA assessments. And last, we'll talk about Mitchell High School, which just came before the board in April of two thousand and twenty-two. They've started implementation of their innovation plan during the end of the school year and into this fall, and we've begun CD, progress monitoring with the school this fall. And on the two thousand and twenty-two preliminary SPF, Mitchell's rating was turnaround with a does not meet for achievement and for growth and approaching in post-secondary and workforce readiness. Mitchell had an eighty-eight percent total participation in both ELA and math. And so next, we'll cover those schools the board saw for their first year-five hearings. These schools just began implementation of their plans as the pandemic was beginning. As you'll recall, Pueblo sixty presented to the board last spring to give an update on progress and share plans for the coming year with their schools. So we'll start with Central High School in Pueblo. The school works with two partial managers, the University of Virginia and Relay. Pueblo Central started the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, building on the work that they've done to support strong staff collaboration, implement their ELA and math curriculum, and provide regular feedback and coaching for teachers. The school has also benefited from very strong staff retention and continues to support, that continues to support them in implementing rigorous instruction and develop a specific supports for ninth graders. Central earned an improvement rating on the two thousand and twenty-two SPF with ratings of does not meet in achievement, approaching in growth, and meets in post-secondary and workforce readiness. Central had ninety-two percent total participation in math and ELA and over sixty-five percent growth participation in, in both ELA and math. They've also seen sustained improvement on their post-secondary and workforce readiness with a meets indicator. So following request to reconsider, the school will move to improvement on watch. Next, we'll talk about Bill Metz, which is in Montavista School District. The school's implementing partial management with Generation Schools Network with a focus on differentiated instruction, aligning their curriculum, and improving the climate and culture of the school. The school is making progress on its key areas of focus, and they have this year in particular focused on supporting students through strategic small group intervention in particularly in literacy, which has led to some significant gains in their literacy data. The school is continuing to implement their partial management plan for the coming year. As highlighted earlier, Metz earned a performance rating through the request to reconsider process last year in two thousand and twenty-one, and again, just earned a performance rating in two thousand and twenty-two with ratings of approaching in achievement and meets in growth. Metz had over ninety-three percent total participation in ELA and math. But because the two thousand and twenty-one framework was not an official framework, Metz is not yet eligible to fully exit performance watch and will continue to implement their Next, we have two schools in Denver. As a reminder, DPS's original board orders were passed in the spring of two thousand and twenty, but DPS was back in front of the board in June to talk about progress at these two schools and their plans for the coming year. We'll start with Abraham Lincoln High School. Lincoln High School continues to have a strong vision for implementing their college and career pathway plan. They focus this year on re-grounding and strengthening instruction, particularly their focus on supporting English language learners and teacher professional development and coaching for language development. Their ninth-grade academy and their student support structures are a bright spot. On the two thousand and twenty-two preliminary SPF, Lincoln was priority improvement with ratings of does not meet in achievement and approaching in both growth and post-secondary and workforce readiness. Lincoln had eighty-one percent total participation on the math and ELA assessments during the two thousand and twenty-two assessment window, and about thirty-nine percent growth participation in English and thirty-five percent in math. Next, we'll talk about Manuel High School. Manuel has continued to show progress on the implementation of their pathway plan, especially the focus on teacher coaching and their early college model. Classroom instruction has improved with a more intentional data, data tracking that came along with their new assessment strategy, and the school continues to build out the early college model and is increasing students in concurrent enrollment classes. On the two thousand and twenty-two preliminary SPF, Manuel was priority improvement with ratings of does not meet in achievement and growth and approaching in post-secondary and workforce readiness. Manuel had over ninety percent participation on the math and ELA assessments. However, the school had only thirty-eight percent growth participation in English and thirty-three percent in math. And then finally, we'll talk about those schools that have been, and districts that have been before the board more than once, beginning with Adams fourteen. The district began a contract with their new external manager, TNTP, in July of two thousand and twenty-two. TNTP and the district have worked collaboratively to develop an instructional playbook with specific implementation goals and have launched professional development and monitoring systems centered on those goals across the district. In addition, Adam City High School started implementation of their pathways work with Connected over the summer. CDE has started our check-ins with the district and with TNTP leadership, and we are working with, with the district and TNTP to align our site visits to observe the work in real time in schools across the district and specifically at Central Elementary and Adam City High School. And you'll see that the superintendent, CAO, and TNTP's lead has joined us here today. On the two thousand and twenty-two preliminary SPF, Adams fourteen School District was turnaround with ratings of does not meet in achievement, approaching in growth, and does not meet in post-secondary and workforce readiness. Adams fourteen School District had a ninety-five percent total participation at the elementary level, eighty-six percent at the middle level, and seventy-eight percent overall participation at the high school level. The district met their accountability participation rates in, for each areas. However, all grade levels had less than fifty-five percent growth participation on ELA and math. On the two thousand and twenty-two preliminary SPF, Adam City High School was priority improvement year nine with ratings of does not meet in achievement and approaching in both growth and post-secondary and workforce readiness. Adam City High School had an eighty-one percent total participation and thirty-two percent for ELA and twenty-eight for math. As you, as you know, Central Elementary was before the board in June of two thousand and twenty-two, and the board ordered the implementation of a combined innovation and partial management plan that includes the development of Central as a community school. Their principals returned for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and the school's begun implementation of their innovation plan and began their contract with TNTP on July first. They've also started implementation of components of the community schools model. On the two thousand and twenty-two preliminary SPF, Central earned a turnaround rating with ratings of does not meet on, in both achievement and growth. Total participation was higher than ninety-seven percent. Because of the skip years of assessments and participation in two thousand and twenty-one, Central had too few students to calculate an ELA growth score and had sixty-four percent growth participation in math. And we'll continue on with our rehearings with Rizley, which is in Pueblo sixty. In the spring of two thousand and twenty-two, Pueblo requested continuation of their partial management plan for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which the board granted. This will be the third year that Rizley is implementing their partial management approach. Rizley continued to work with Relay this year with the support of UVA. The school's plan focuses on key areas of instruction, including teacher coaching and professional development and the implementation of their curriculum, new curriculum and assessments. This year, Rizley also implemented a robust academic intervention program to support student, more targeted instruction for students. On the two thousand and twenty-two preliminary SPF, Rizley earned a priority improvement year nine rating with ratings of does not meet in achievement and approaching in growth. Rizley had more than ninety-two percent participation in both ELA and math, and their growth participation was fifty-one percent in ELA and fifty-nine percent in math. And then finally, we'll talk, move over to Aurora Central High School. Aurora Central High School has, is continuing to implement its academic plans and continues to build systems across the school for data analysis and supportive staff through the implementation of their innovation plan. PEBC, their academic partner, continued their support during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year based on their phenomenal teaching framework, supporting their leadership and instructional coaches. Aurora has indicated that PEBC will continue for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. This fall, as a part of Aurora's blueprint plan, the Charles Burrell Visual and Performing Arts Campus opened at Aurora Central. This campus model starts with a K through three, sixth grade and ninth graders enrolling into an arts magnet program alongside Aurora Central and will build to include a full K-12 academic campus. On the two thousand and twenty-two preliminary SPF, Aurora Central earned a turnaround year nine rating with ratings of does not meet in achievement and growth and approaching in post-secondary and workforce readiness. Aurora Central had seventy-seven percent total participation on the ELA and math assessments and had less than twenty-five percent growth participation in both ELA and math. That concludes a summary of our progress monitoring for groups of schools with directed action. So the next-
Ms. Jekyll, we've got questions.
Yes, questions. We'll stop there for a second before we move on to talk about the spring. Yes.
I think I-
There we go. Thanks, Ms. Corzal. And I can hold this question till the end if that's better, but because it relates to Aurora Central, I've been curious about how their new plan and that new model relates to how, how we gauge or how we view their monitoring. And I had a little bit of confusion in my own mind. It sounds like what they're doing is exciting, and I've heard good things, but I'm just a little bit confused about how to think about that campus, given that it seems to be going through a change in the model of what it is. So how do we balance those two things happening at the same time?
Madam Chair, thank you for the question. So in working with Aurora and Johan, who's in the audience, is assigned to Aurora, so I can let him add, the school at the moment is phasing in and building out. So they're continuing to implement their innovation plan with the same waivers and all of that at the moment. Over the course of the next year or two, they may be, due to their framework, back for a rehearing, at which point it may be appropriate for them to present an update to their plan. But at this moment, where they are phasing in, they are continuing to implement Aurora Central's plan as, as developed originally and building in this new pathway plan. So we're thinking about it as an add-on to the core plan that they've been implementing.
And just out of curiosity, given that they're phasing in- And just out of curiosity, given that they're phasing in this new, I guess it's an arts magnet school, if I understand correctly, are they phasing that in grade by grade similar to what was done at, oh, and now the name just flew right out of my mind, but it's in Aurora, and there's a school that's phasing, that started kindergarten in one and then two and three and then-
Correct. Madam Chair, yes, correct. They are phasing in right now. It is K-3, I think, K-3, sixth and ninth are phasing in, so they'll continue to add grades. And so, they've given us updates, and we continue to progress monitor the school. And so, Aurora Central is continuing to operate as Aurora Central High School and adding this program over time, at which point, at some point, it may be, they'll need an update, but their order also requires a return for a rehearing pending on the 2023 framework. So, there will be a point at which the board will receive an update. And we will continue to update you all as the year phases in, as we are doing progress monitoring visits with them.
Thank you, and I thought of the name of it. It was Fletcher, but, of course, but then I'm also hopeful that if, in the event that they do come before us again, maybe if we can flag it to say, I'm sure they would anyway, but speak to the way that those two plans impact one another or work together, that would be helpful for my understanding. Thanks very much.
Board Member Scarsica.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I learned my part. Now, at the very end of the second day, I know the way. And I think, and to jump onto her question, so the school has not requested a new school code, which is what they would need to do in order to start over on the clock. They would need to be deemed a new school, and they are not. They're changing the model, but they've not asked to restart the whole school. They have not shut down. So, technically, isn't that kind of the marker?
Madam Chair, yes. So, technically, they have received a new school code because of the grade changes in some of our school code policy, but the accountability history of Aurora Central is following that new school code. So, it does not start over their accountability history, but given the eventual shift in enrollment, it met some criteria for a new school code, but it does not impact their accountability history.
And are they going to receive, they're going to take one code for K-12 on that school? They're going to take multiple codes?
Madam Chair, I need to double check.
I think I could check that.
Yes.
It would be unusual for one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Jackal, go ahead and continue.
Great. And we are, we will continue, you feel free to continue and ask us any questions about individual schools as we come to the end of this. So, Dr. Hannaford is going to share a little bit about what comes next, and we'll close out with just a look at the calendar view for the year of what's coming up this year.
Okay, so, as you know, schools that met the eligibility requirements for the expedited request to reconsider process may exit performance watch or be designated as on watch through that process. For most sites, this will not end their state board order. The schools will need to earn an improvement or performance on the 2023 frameworks to fully exit performance watch and in their orders. And there are three schools that are eligible for expedited request to reconsider. Men aqua will fully exit performance watch and thus end their state board order. Pueblo Central High School and Bill Metz Elementary School will move to on watch status and will need to earn then an improvement or a higher rating on the 2023 frameworks to fully exit performance watch. These improvements from these schools build on previously leading indicator data that we've been monitoring, attendance, behavior, local assessment data, and we're very pleased to see these improvements. So, this slide shows the rest of the school sites with directed action, and CDE does not anticipate adjustments to these orders based on their 2022 frameworks. And I think, Lindsay, I'm going to turn it back to you, if that's okay, to walk us through some nuts and bolts of our future activities of the calendar year.
Just a quick question before we move on. These districts on this last page do have the option to request a change should they wish, but you've not heard anything to that. Have we asked?
Some of them are eligible for request to reconsider, so they've met that 90% participation rate, and some of them on this list-
Yeah, I'm not talking about request to reconsider. I'm talking about requests to change the order. In other words, whatever they've been doing, they'd like to enhance it, reduce it, change it in some way.
Madam Chair, part of that, I think, was, is, the answer to that is no, not yet, and we will continue to ask them. We want to be responsive to their data. I think part of that is timing of the school year. There were no anticipated changes for the 22-23 school year. I think districts wanted to see their frameworks, but we'll continue to have conversations this fall about any shifts or changes after the request to reconsider process plays out. So, I think part of that is timing, but we'll continue to ask them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And correct. So, I will just finish with the sort of calendar view of the year. In October in Greeley, we are going to present a short presentation on our shared learning of an external evaluation that we've done of some of CDE's supports and highlight some bright spot schools a little bit deeper and some of the lessons learned from these bright spots sites, so we're looking forward to that. As mentioned earlier, the board requested an update from Gateway High School at some point during the year, which will be preceded by a state review panel visit. The board also requested an update on Central Elementary from Adams 14 during this 22-23 school year. We currently anticipate that update in November, which may be submitted as a written report or presentation. And we will provide another progress monitoring update for all schools and districts with directed action in February. And so, if there are any, as you were raising before, any requests for order modifications or any early action hearings, we anticipate those happening after February of this year. So, that's a look at the coming year, and so with that, we will open it up for questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions, observations? Board Member Esser? Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Jackal and Dr. Hannaford. My question naturally is about one of my districts. Have you, did you work with Central Elementary and Adam City High School during the summer break and during the start of school this year?
Madam Chair, we began working with them, we all took a little bit of a summer vacation, but we've started meeting with the district in early August. So, we've set up a schedule for visits for the coming year for both schools and a cadence of regular progress monitoring visits with the district that we're doing alongside TNTP, so we can see the work in action.
Well, have you seen, Madam Chair, sorry, have you seen continued implementation of wonders, for example, and a math curriculum with professional development having taken place in the summer and with TNTP as partners, or not yet?
Madam Chair, we have not yet had our first site visit to either school, which we really are looking forward to, but the district had shared with us their professional development playbook that had a roadmap of specific activities for each school and key priority areas for professional learning for different arcs of the year, so focused on a strong start of the year. So, they have shared that with us and have shared some of the progress that they're seeing in some of their classroom observations, and we are looking forward to onsite visits when they're scheduled. I believe they're scheduled for two weeks from now.
And did they maintain their curriculum? Do you know?
Madam Chair, I believe so. I haven't heard anything to the other that they have not. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Jackal. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Board Member Schaffel?
I don't have any specific questions right now. At some point, I'd love to meet with somebody and kind of analyze the efficacy of these external management partners and how much we're paying them. There's been additional funds allocated for turnaround and just, you know, is it working? And what is the return on investment? How much are we spending? And, you know, sometimes I feel like we're spending a lot of money on things that should already be happening, and they're not, so we're trying to backfill with this additional reform-type initiatives. But I appreciate the report, appreciate the detail. At some point, I'd love to meet with maybe Dr. Hannaford or whoever just to think through that financial piece and how the funding has increased and what its impact is.
Thank you. Actually, we might be, to the extent that you do an analysis, we might all be interested in some of that, because there's certainly some consistency in the services and the providers across these districts. Board Member Scarsica, do you have any questions?
No.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes, along those same lines, Ms. Jackal, you will be able to see some of the external managers doing a much better job than others, and I think you're in a great position to give us some report on the ones that are doing a really good job for future reference. And not just that they're doing a good job, but why are they? Why are they surfacing higher than others? An overview of those, since you're there on the ground, would be really helpful.
Board Member McClellan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you touch on, the numbers for growth participation seem to vary wildly. Can you kind of touch on some of the factors that go into that and why we might be seeing such big differences there?
Madam Chair, and Ms. Medler did not leave the room, so if I get this wrong, I'll her, but it had to do with the comparison cohorts of students who were in-person and able to take the assessments in previous years, if they have a comparison score between years. And so, as we know, some of our districts had less in-person learning in the previous years, which impacted their growth participation.
Okay, so, would that have reflected, for example, transient populations? So, is it kind of a measure of whether or not you had the same students to track year over year, so that if you had a very mobile population, students in, students out, so that you're literally looking at different students year over year? Would that be reflected in this?
Yes, Madam Chair, yes, yeah, and being able to compare where students were between years, if they were attributed to that, how they're attributed to that school between years, and having a lower N for the missed years of assessment than in this year. So, they may have had really high participation this year, but not so high last year, which makes the growth comparison challenging.
Okay, so that's kind of, it's almost like an asterisk on the growth number to tell us, take this number with a grain of salt because we've got some challenges with the data. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Drom, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, Commissioner?
Madam Chair, I just want to say one more thing, just because it was a question yesterday, and we did get confirmation today, just and our guests from Adams 14 are here. All of their REDACT submission is in, and they have all of their teachers trained in the REDACT, so just confirmed that, so just wanted to make sure that they heard that.
Good. One more. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Look forward to next month's bright spots. So, colleagues, the last agenda item is board member reports. I'll go down the line for board members to provide a short report of what you've been up to this past month and what your plans are. Board Member Esser?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I don't want to hear about your plans, actually.
I'm sure no, no one has missed that, the main district in CD7 is Jeffco, and they are closing some of the smaller schools because they're far below capacity, and part of it is funding issues. So, I've had several conversations with different family members and different constituents. It's a very hard situation, and it's hard to explain to parents why six children in one classroom is not really ideal and what that costs for the teacher, the district, trying to get enough kids together to make a good grouping and get a good exchange of ideas, so that's been part of what I've been doing. And for whatever reason, I'm invited to a lot of education task forces, and what's really interesting is there's no parents want. There's, this group of parents want this to happen, and another group of parents want something totally different to happen, and then we're all in the same room. It stays pretty collegial, but I think I've learned that there's not parents want. There's, these parents want this, and these parents want that. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is I think we all need to listen to all sides of what parents are asking and that we show grace towards each other, because it's been contentious a few times, but I'm glad to always be there and hear what constituents have to say. So, that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, and safe travels. Board Member Schaffel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the start of the school year has made people just very busy, so some of my activities have been just delayed a bit until things settle down, but I have been working with a group on this continuing issue of databases and exposing children to inappropriate content. It seems to be an issue somewhat nationally. There's a number of states that have passed legislation addressing this with databases, and so I've been talking to some groups in Colorado about that. Of course, the ongoing issues with the REDACT, especially the assessments, been talking to folks about that and what might be a good next step, and then finally continuing conversations about the social studies standards. Thank you so much, and thanks for allowing me to join by phone as I was driving.
Thank you. Board Member Scarsica?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Much like, I'm just, oh my God, am I tired? Remember the person before me? That's what was coming out of my mouth, Deb Schaffel. Much like that, with schools back in session, the beginning of the month, it's a really good time to leave folks alone, so I've been focusing the work on just individual meetings, lots of individual phone calls, meetings with department staff, getting lots of questions answered, background, spending quite a bit of time on the social studies standards, revisions potentially to come forward, and that's really, that's about it. I think the next couple of weeks, very busy. Suddenly, everybody's decided that it's time to meet, so, well, we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Right. Board Member Rankin, are you ready?
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Bizzy, would you please pass out the-
Show and tell?
Fall Aspen leaves.
Oh, that's great. I needed a new bookmarker. That's awesome. Thank you.
I'm ready.
Thank you.
I need a good one.
They're all good. Yes, Mrs. Rice.
Thanks, Bizzy. Thank you. I just want to shine a spotlight on Colorado Springs. I lived here 40 years ago, and today I took a run down to Wood Avenue and found the house yesterday that we had lived in, and I thought I would put that up on the screen. They've done a great job of making it real fancy. It was built in the 1800s. It's on the corner of Wood and Uenta, and there's just something really special about the history of Colorado Springs. It's grown immensely in the last 40 years, but I had some great experiences here. I had taught school in California, came out here and didn't qualify for a teacher license back then. I have gotten it since then, but I haven't taught in Colorado, but I really worked, as a lot of you know, on my running ability. And if you will flip to the next picture, and I took this picture this morning. It's Pike's Peak. I don't know if you're all familiar with that. In 1981, there was a race to the top, and I was the first female to the top of the peak from Manatee Springs. I know, I know. Good old days, yeah. But Colorado, I thought, the superintendent yesterday really shown a great spotlight on Colorado Springs, and having been here over the years, it's grown a lot, but I have some great fond memories, and I appreciate D-11 for allowing us to be here. Thank you. Oh, I have one more thing. I've been invited to go out to Southern California in October. Very interesting conference. I'll be on a panel. It's the Synergy in the Sciences to Support Literacy Instruction in its states that will be comparing notes on where they are in the REDACT. Thank you.
Board Member McClellan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the pleasure of meeting with Cherry Creek School District Leadership Superintendent Christopher Smith and CFO Scott Smith, and we had a good substantive discussion with a lot of thoughtful, thoughtful moments for me to take away, particularly for us to think about the way that any decisions that we make or any decisions that are made in the legislature- the way that any decisions that we make or any decisions that are made in the legislature may impact local districts financially. So that was very thoughtful, and I appreciated the time with them. And then in August, I got to visit the Denver Botanic Gardens for the African Leadership Group's Education Forum, and they kind of flipped the script a little bit. The elected officials were invited to attend and listen instead of talking, and then this was very parent and student-based input from the immigrant community in Aurora, and it was a terrific forum, and they gave us lots to think about and lots to take in and be thoughtful about going forward, so that was terrific. Thank you.
Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you all coming to Colorado Springs. I've had the good fortune to live here for 65 years, and it's been a great place to grow up and to live, and it's nice to be able to share. I spent, I only attended one event, per se, in this last month, and that was to Club 20, where I did get an opportunity to speak to a number of legislators and candidates and have some discussions about legislative, about education issues, and I thought those were very helpful. And I probably have talked with at least half a dozen of my local school board members over the past month, met with a couple of them in person, and trying to evaluate the kinds of problems they're having and what, if any, assistance the state board might be able to provide, given some of their, some of the problems they're facing. I think the thing that's concerned me over since the last board meeting more than anything else is the CMAS scores and the potential implications going forward for our students and really for the future of our country. If you sort of extrapolate these results on a nationwide basis, I don't believe Colorado had the worst results, but I think there's an important, there are, it impressed upon me the importance of perhaps weighing in on things that, you know, it was almost politically incorrect to talk about during previous, during the previous year or two, that we really should have weighed in on and some of the things you could see coming. And one of them is, and I think the one that distresses me the most, is turning the education system and the rules that govern attendance and whether or not schools are open solely, and I use the word solely, to the Department of Health. I think it's clear that by letting the health experts manage our economy for the last three years, it's been an unmitigated disaster of which we are about to reap the problems that have been sown by them. And certainly, we are reaping now the seeds that were sown in school closures that I believe were completely unnecessary, mask requirements that have proven to be less than effective in preventing and protecting children or anyone else for that matter. And so I think I will probably take the time to draft a letter, which I suspect will not get a majority of support in this board, to the Department of Health suggesting that they might take a more balanced approach to their suggestions for public schools, because I had a lot of superintendents in the 5th Congressional District, particularly in the rural areas of the 5th Congressional District, that wanted to stay open, believed they could stay open, but were afraid to stay open because they thought the guidance provided by the Department of Health put them in a very difficult legal position if anything went wrong. And so, and it is, if there is one thing that has been clear and that should be clear to everyone, in-person learning is more effective than remote learning. Now, there are some and a very few children who do better from remote learning, but it's very few. And so I think this board really ought to have the courage to weigh in and say to the Department of Health, you need a lot more balanced approach, and you really need to think about what you're doing, so we don't perpetuate in this year, because I suspect there will be COVID outbreaks, there are going to be flu outbreaks. Closing the schools is a horrific idea unless there's a real health emergency. So I would hope we would be willing to take some action on that. And finally, finally, I think in going back to the test scores over the past eight years at least that I've been on the board, all of the gains, I think, were wiped out in this one year. And in those gains, if you looked at them on a growth to standard basis, no one in this room would live long enough to see an acceptable result in those scores. The progress was very slow. So I think we, as a board, I think we all need to start taking a look at a question that is, I've really given a lot of thought to of late, and that is, is this as good as it gets? I think many of you may remember the movie drove a lot of interesting points home, but if this is as good as it gets, we're not thinking outside the box, and we're not moving things forward, and we're not, we're not providing any even commentary to the system that would help it get to a point where it might improve at a somewhat faster pace. So I'm going to start to look at that in ways that are likely to make people very uncomfortable, but if this is as good as it gets, the simple answer to that question is, it's not good enough. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. As Ms. Cordell announced early on, NASB will have their meeting in Phoenix in October. While we're no longer members, there are several of us who are planning to attend, and I feel fortunate that I was invited from Colorado, represent Colorado on a state mathematics improvements group. Folks have heard me long enough. NASB would love to have us return, since they see Colorado as a really important state to be a member of, particularly in these kind of research studies, et cetera, because we are pretty progressive in many of the programs that we have. So I'm looking forward to attending that. I've attended two meetings of the 1215 Task Force that the commissioner described. This is about post-secondary opportunities for kids, kind of bringing some order to what's available, what's needed, communicating. I'm really not, in fact, I know that parents don't really know what the options are, and the options are different across the state, which starts creating the inequities for students. So I think it's going to be a really interesting opportunity. I worry a little bit when I listen to the folks who are representing the various groups, that academics is not their focus, that it is about workforce readiness in terms of work skills. So I will be the obnoxious person who will say, you know, you're killing me when you tell me that high schoolers don't need algebra. They're not going to use it. We use algebra every single day in our lives. People just don't realize it's algebra. Anyway, so I will be obnoxious in that. I participated in an education law class, and I'm going to be doing that again one or two more times, to talk about accountability to law school grads. I'm having a really wonderful time working on the remodel for our boardroom with Andy Stein. We talked about that yesterday, and I don't want to, I don't plan to have any more meetings with you all about it, but I will send emails when I'm asked about where to put COVID hooks and all those other things, because it is getting down to what do we really want? And I do think we should say something. That way, we shouldn't complain in January when we get there, right? So if they ask us, we probably should weigh in somehow. So I again want to thank D-11 for their hospitality, for allowing us to come. It's been really enjoyable. Thanks to Mr. Durham for his hospitality. And the meeting is adjourned. We will be meeting in Greeley next month on October 12, and we're looking forward to the upcoming meeting, which should be posted, the wins and wears question. Thank you.